Hi.
Good evening.
Wow, never can get a very good background.
Remember, all of our audience can hear you right now, Ms. Collier.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Pat. Good evening.
How are you?
All right. How are you?
Good, good. Hello, Pat.
I think I'm gonna go get a tie.
It's okay, Brian. You look good.
That's all right. I had one in hand. I was, I'll be right back.
Kurt, I like your background.
Yes, old Pennsylvania station in New York City.
That's great.
Is there some sort of Zoom glitch? Because people are saying they can only see one box. Is there some setting that needs to be fixed?
Everybody, everybody has the ability to go between gallery, which is everybody and the speaker view. If you only see one person, it's in speaker view. You need to make it in gallery view if you want to see everybody. Also, for any of our attendees out there tonight, I see a couple of students that put 10th grade student. You need to put on a real name, please, just for Zoom meeting safety. So please change your name. Stacy, you are correct. Attendees cannot change it. Only panelists can go between gallery and speaker view.
How are you guys feeling? Any better? Jared, Jason, you guys feeling better?
Hey, hanging in there, Dr. Glasso. Thank you.
Josh, don't get old. See what happens when you get vaccines. You don't feel well after the second shot.
I'm hearing that. It sounds a little scary, but we'll see.
You know, you know, it's amazing how I got a second shot. I had, I look like Mr. Warren and Mr. Burr. And my wife was with me. She had her second shot and she could have danced all night, nothing. So it's amazing how it affects in different. Are you gonna be a doctor, Josh, when you go to school? What are you gonna be?
I cannot do STEM for my life, law, hopefully.
Okay, I was, yeah, I was gonna ask you about DNA. I thought maybe you were doing some medicals. I was gonna ask you about DNA and how this vaccine affects different DNAs, you know? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find one of the good medical students to find out exactly why different people have these kinds of reactions. Amazing how different they are.
I think we've got a quorum. What do you think, Matt? Should we get started?
Yes.
Got a lot of people again. It's really hard to do these when you have so many boxes.
We're, we're getting dangerously close to the thousand attendees.
Wow. Oh, remember, Matt, you can add them as panelists.
I guess if we have to.
But that's, yeah.
I guess they, they all heard that Pat had something special planned.
Yep, now I'm ready.
You ready? Okay. We'll get started then. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. So thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton packet in the times on January 6th, 2021, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board policy 2230 recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate times, as noted in the agenda, are added by the presiding officer shall quote unquote raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the members of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district authorized is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 188388.1. In the event that NJSA, that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this by law. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel, actions referred to high school, central administrative and district wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Beth Baron.
Yes, here.
Debbie Bronfield.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Talk Ponder.
Present.
Your cats.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Dean Durbin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first set of business tonight is the adoption of four sets of minutes, each of which is an action item. Could I have a motion for the minutes of the January 26, 2021 meeting, please?
So moved.
Brian, thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, Michelle, thank you. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Bolden, could you call the roll, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield.
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Your cats?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion pass unanimous. The next set of minutes is for the February 2nd, 2021 meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, yes, Michelle, second. Any discussion? If not, could you please call the roll?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yeah.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, unanimous. The third set of minutes is the budget workshop from February 9th, 2021. Could I have a motion, please? Debbie, second, Dan? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Last but not least, this fourth set of minutes for the last month of our meetings is a special board meeting minutes of February 18th, 2021. Could I have a motion, please? Betsy, second? Brian, thank you. Could we, any discussion? Could we call the roll, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Can I make one point of order before we begin with regard to the agenda? And I would message this, but we're, there's a lot of messages. The student reps, Yasser Meier, would like to present after Dr. Glasso's report. So would we be able to change that, please?
For the board president?
Yes, that's fine, right? They are, aren't they? Daphna, they're.
It's already changed, actually.
Yeah, it's been changed.
It's changed from the morning. Thank you for that.
Just, everyone should just refresh because we did.
Well, actually, the calendar is there first. Or was that changed?
Well, there is a calendar.
Yes, the, this is superintendent's comments, and then it's the student board members' report.
Right, they come right after Daphna. There is a discussion of a calendar, but they come after that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I will just be very brief tonight. I do note that we have met four times in the past month. We've met almost weekly. There's been a lot going on. I'm gonna thank everyone for coming out tonight. It looks like we have a very well attended meeting. And the big news, which I think most people have, have heard, is that we have announced that Dr. Carol Kelly will be joining us as our next superintendent as of July 1st. We had a meeting on the 18th last Thursday. If you want to look at that recording, anyone who's interested in seeing, in seeing who she is and hearing her speak. She is currently the superintendent in Oak Park, Illinois, and will be that until the end of the year. So she does have 6,000 children under her care presently. So she will not be with us until July. We will be transitioning slowly and preparing for her arrival, and there will be opportunities in the next few months to get to know her. And we'll give more information on that when we have it. And I would just then wanted, we'll do a short bit of gratitude tonight, which we like to do in every meeting to make sure we remember people. And was that, Daphna, would you like to start that? Or Betsy? Betsy, you want to go first?
Sure. Either, either way, I will start first. I note that I see Patty Gainer's daughter on this call. Please share this with Patty if she's not watching, but we're really glad that you're on, Amy. When you're elected as a board member for the Princeton Public Schools, you're greeted with a friendly phone call shortly thereafter to go over all the details. That phone call comes from Patty Gainer, the executive secretary to the business administrator and the board and board secretary. Patty's retirement from the district is included on tonight's agenda, as she'll be retiring on June 30th after 11 years of service to the district. It is with mixed emotions that I accept Patty's retirement, because while I am thrilled for her and her family, especially her grandchildren, as a board member, I know what a loss this is for our district. Patty doesn't miss a beat. To give you a quick example, as the district moved to remote mid-March, she and I were commuting, communicating regularly regarding applications of potential interim superintendents, and Patty continued that work from her home. When we were able to offer bagels with the board in person and we could fit as many people as possible in the Valley Road boardroom, Patty took care of all of those logistics for us and kept everything running. Patty, thank you for all you've done for our district and for the board. We are so grateful for your service and for your friendship, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Daphna?
Thank you. My statement of gratitude is for Lenora Keel, whose retirement is on the agenda for board approval tonight. Lenora has been with the district for more than 20 years and currently is the coordinator of student family services and social worker at Princeton High School. Lenora is one of those people who works tirelessly for kids with very little fanfare. In her position, Lenora has served as many roles, including mentor and someone's students grow to rely on. Lenora has consistently gone above and beyond her role, and she's a favorite of students, not just because her office was always stocked with the snacks they liked. In addition to her day job, Lenora also worked with students as an advisor to MCAN, mentoring them and chaperoning them on trips. She annually put a program together for Black History Month. Last year, she brought a traveling museum to PHS, which highlighted contributions of Black Americans in American history. Lenora has also been an advisor for Pulse, and she helped minority students to use their voices. In recent years, Lenora helped Black and Hispanic students hold a forum entitled See Me Here Me, where students shared their experiences as Black and Brown kids at Princeton High School. It was a safe space for students to share not always positive experiences of their time at the high school. Lenora has been a leader for minority students and all students in our community. She has counseled them, she has guided them, and she has fed them. I wish her long and healthy retirement. Lenora, you will be missed.
Thank you, Daphna, for that gratitude. Thank you, Betsy. It's really always great to start our meetings with it, with that attitude, and with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Glasso for superintendent's report.
Okay, well, thank you and good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to introduce Dr. Joy Barnes Johnson, who has been a teacher in Princeton for more than 13 years, and who has dedication, has made the Princeton induction to racial literacy a reality. Dr. Johnson teaches chemistry and earth science, and in recent years, she also partnered with Patty Manhart to create and pilot the well-received racial literacy course at Princeton High School. I would like to welcome her here tonight to provide some context on the P I R L and what it means to the students and the community. Dr. Joy? Joy? She's not here yet, or she, hopefully she could get in. I'll find her. Okay. I did send her a panel.
She's here. She's on the chat.
Okay, great, great. I'll find her. Why can't I find her? Oh, Dr. Barnes Johnson. Yeah. Promoting her to panelist right now. There we go. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Glasso and Board of Education. As you can see, I'm still in my classroom, and so I greet you from room 185. I wanted to say thank you to you for recognizing Lenora Keel, who is a gemstone and a mentor, not only to students but to faculty in the building. She will be sorely missed. The MCAN Evening of Cultural Celebration will premiere as a virtual event this Friday. So I'll put that information in the chat if people want to access our premiere event at that time. But with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and prepare to jump in to this conversation about what is the P I R L program. I want to start by saying this has been a collaborative effort over several years of thinking. I want to acknowledge that Princeton Introduction to Racial Literacy was in the imagination of students and teachers many, many, many years ago, and I want to thank the initial coalition of educators, Martha Hayden, Linda Morris, Jen Bigioni, Grace Elia. I think we were the core, who wanted to imagine what it would be like to have a curriculum that was transformative and Socratic and world-changing all at the same time. And so when we imagined that program years ago, we had no idea that it would be an opportunity for us to also think broadly about how to serve. But then we, as a community, saw several students find their voice, including Priya Balchi, Winona Guo, and then many others, including MCAN students, who decided, Brianna Silva, I don't want to name all the names, but tons of people, Mitzi, Valeria, Jeffrey, who, over the years, decided that this is a school that deserves to be a quality school, not just for some students but for all students, and what quality looks like is, well, racially literate, caring, empathetic, compassionate, and high achieving. And so the Princeton Introduction to Racial Literacy class is an attempt to respond to not only previous students' desire to see racial literacy become a part of what we institutionalize in our school, but current students who have shown interest in making sure that we do more of what we've started. So on the line, there are several members of the Pearl team who have contributed to this work. Of course, there is a core team, Patty Manhart, Katie Dineen, Jamila Thompson, Scott Cameron, Doug Lewandowski, and Ashley Smith were part of a team to sort of figure out how we could execute this plan, how we could put it into Canvas so that any student who took it, or any educator who took it, or any community member who took it, would be able to develop capacity for race conversation and anti-bias without feeling guilt or shame or fear that they would be judged about what they're thinking. So the beauty of the online self-directed pace and design of this course is that we have an opportunity to do that. And so I want to first say that this is our pilot year, because we have a lot of things changing. We never could have imagined that we would still be in a remote learning environment, nor could we ever have imagined that a year after we first left, we'd still be in this space. And so Canvas, remote pandemic continues. And so the Pearl course, in spite of those challenges, has been piloted with educators, building on the work that Keisha Smith Carrington and her team has done to draw attention to a sort of foundational conversation about what it means to be racially literate or to have a foundation of equity in who we are as educators. And so the goal of the Pearl course is pretty simple. There are two. The first goal is basically to impact our school culture and build capacity for our mission. The second goal is much more specific, and it's designed to prioritize values that reduce cruelty, disrespect, dishonesty, harmful behavior, not only toward other people, but that we harbor for ourselves. Internalized oppression and a sort of warped self-concept is part of what we know we need to address, especially now that students do not have the normal or normalized social outlets that they've had before. So this is not new work. This is about pulling from our, our goal to create citizens for a global society. We've wanted to embrace these multi-literacy, and multicultural education is not new. The ideas that started at the beginning of our American experiment to embrace diverse groups of people is one that we still hold. And so this idea that multicultural education does all of these things, but has at its foundation prejudice reduction and empowering school culture, that's where we find ourselves. And in the same way that we want to understand the kinds of tragedies that happen in the human condition, we know that we don't get to genocide without first starting with biased attitudes. And so this current model is the one that we are using for the Pearl course. It's called, I call it a green zone, because it's highly critical without being, it's a critique without being. it's a critique without being harmful, harmfully critical. It's one that's based in love, humility, and reflection. And this green zone is sort of like any other psychology that looks at how do we meet the needs of the human? And so we start with this idea that the needs of the human, once they have felt safe, once they've felt like they belong, is really about how we get to achievement. And so it's parallel and aligns well with our mission and our goals as a district. And so those green zone things that build literacy allow us to communicate in a language that we all understand. And so the Pearl Course has eight key questions that it uses to sort of have students consider who they are in the context of their own learning, has them examine from their own perspective why and how they can contribute to this transformed school culture. The standards themselves and the enduring understanding are built on the anti-bias framework of the Teaching for Justice standards. And so the goal of broader reflexivity is basically the fuel for the journey for student leaders, for educational leaders, and our whole school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joy. I know there was a number of comments in the chat about how wonderful the program is. And one of the questions was about the content being bilingual. Is there an opportunity for that? Can you address that by any chance?
Yes, yes, that is part of why we were piloting this class right now. We recognize that we need to develop a multilingual platform for our, our community stakeholders. I am monolingual. I am monolingual. However, we have modules that are in our, or activities that are in our module that are multilingual or allow for multilinguality. Here is the beautiful part about how the course meets. Users, takers, participants in the course are free to respond in whatever language is appropriate for them because we do not give, students earn credit for completion without the pressure of valuation, without the pressure of being scored. And so students who feel that are able to communicate in a language other than English are free to do that. And we've actually had students who've taken me up on that challenge. And it's been beautiful to see because they respond in a language that feels natural to them and in ways that feel appropriate for what they have to say.
Well, thank you very much for spending some time with us. Thank you to you and all the colleagues that worked with you to help develop the program. It'll become a significant part, a critical part in Princeton for future years. So it's something to be proud of, and I know the Board of Education supports this endeavor. So Dr. Joy and your colleagues and fellow professionals, thank you very much for tonight.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, Dr. Joy, can you share the presentation with us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Dr. Galasso, did you want to mention that I think this course will be mandatory for our graduates starting next year?
For next year and also our student leaders. Any student who is going to take a leadership position in the Princeton school system will be involved in taking the course. And the course will also be open to the public, and I believe that's the spring. There will be some slots open for the general public to take. So it's a great, the beauty of it is it was, it was born in the school system, but now it's spreading to the entire community and I think is in line with the school district's mission. And so we're very appreciative of the work that's being done by Dr. Joy and Patty Manhart and the others who formed the core of developing this concept for the system.
Thank you.
Okay, second short presentation. Pat Lenahan, who's our supervisor of visual and performing arts, and teachers who work with Mr. Lenahan and his department, work with our students to make wonderful music, art, and drama. And for many years, our schools have done art department work and developed wonderful concerts and so forth and so on. But in these hard COVID times, it's difficult to do. But Mr. Lenahan has provided us with a quick look at some terrific work inspired by art masterpieces that students created this year. I know you're going to enjoy it. I've watched it three or four times. It's just a wonderful little piece of about two minutes. And the entire art project is on our, we're going to be providing a link in the chat, and it'll be on the website. I would encourage all of you to take a look at it. It's phenomenal. So Matt, would you just play the little vignette that Mr. Lenahan provided?
Yes. Pat, do you have it up? I can, I can pull it up real quick. Hold on. I got it.
Got it?
Oh. You guys see it?
Not yet.
But yeah.
All right, there we go.
Let me go back.
Matt, you're not, the music is not playing. Or or the volume is down. Although, although it's only two minutes long, it's really impactful. And I tell you, it's the music and just watching your art pieces is a, it's almost like a stress reliever. Just is a beautiful thing to watch. So we congratulate all of the professionals who put it together on the direction of Mr. Lenahan. And we would encourage you to go on the website and look at the full presentation. It is really a wonderful presentation, as most of the things that are done by the visual arts group. Their concerts are terrific, so it's really nice. So congratulations to all of you. It's really wonderful, and we enjoyed it very, very much. The next presentation is talking about our transition to reopen. As we began the school year, we began the school year on a remote basis. And over the course of the last six months, we've moved to more and more in-person instruction. We're now moving to our, what we call transition to normal, or as close as we can in this environment. And the goal is to provide opportunities for students to attend as much in-person instruction by maintaining the health and safety of our faculty, staff, and our students. We've been very fortunate to work with our medical professionals over the course of the last seven months to develop wonderful health protocols. We've been very, very fortunate that we've had very, we've had no in-school transmissions of the COVID-19 virus, which we're very proud of. And we now are recommending that we start to move into a direction of bringing a number of our students back who choose to come back off of remote or they may remain on remote. And I'm going to just give an overview, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Ginsburg to present the elementary piece, and we'll move through the four other presentations. But the overarching view is this. After spring break, we would like to have our middle and high school kids fully engaged, as many as they would, as many students who would like to be in school in person. That instruction will be very similar to the model that they have today with the addition of a collaborative 60-minute model period in the afternoon that will be designed by the principals, administrators, of teaching faculty, and student input. It'll be collaborative. It'll be direct instruction. It will include project-based instruction. It will include interdisciplinary opportunities or independent research. It'll actually be a contract between the student, the teacher, and the administrative approval. The purpose of that is twofold. We hope to have a full athletic program operating once the warm weather begins, and we have tents outside for youngs, for our students to go out to have breaks in between classes, for mass breaks, to have a snack and eat it outside socially distanced. But at the end of the day, they will be able to participate in the full athletic schedule, a full art, music schedule, a full club and activity schedule, which can be held virtually and/or in person following our medical protocols that we have designed. So that's the overarching goal. We just want to return as much as we possibly can to provide our seniors and to provide students who want to be on campus an opportunity to experience education as it was meant to be delivered. That is the intent. So I'm going to ask Dr. Ginsburg to start us off and talk a little bit about our elementary transition to normal.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Galasso. I want to acknowledge our four elementary principals, and they've represented the needs of our elementary school youngsters, and they've spoken as well to their staff members, and they've provided input from their staff members as well. So the plan that we're presenting is not necessarily where we started, but it really reflects collaboration amongst lots of people. Matt, can you put up the first slide, please? The next one. So first, I just want, there's lots of things that we've considered, but what we wanted to share with you were some that had a direct effect on the plan that we're going to be sharing with you. First of all, starting out in September, each, the elementary schools had Wednesday as a swing day where we could do thorough cleaning, deep cleaning of the schools because there were concerns about surfaces being possible contaminants. So our youngsters were coming in. We had cohorts A and B for the children who were coming in in person, and cohort C with the all-remote children. So on a Monday and Tuesday in the morning, cohort A would come in, cohorts B and C were at home, and they were receiving direct instruction from special teachers, some special needs teachers. They had some short independent projects and so forth. Then the youngsters who were in school, the A group, went home. And in the afternoon, the homeroom teachers would then work with the children who were at home, the Bs and Cs, giving them direct instruction again in reading, writing, and math, which is what their focus had been in the morning with the in-person students. Thursday and Friday, the B group came in in the morning, and the A and C groups were at home. On Wednesday, that was our swing day. We still had instruction. It was all remote instruction. But the, the teachers were able to combine kids across all three groups, A, B, and C, the small focused instructional groups based on needs that teachers had assessed during the other days. So that was one situation or one consideration that we had that we wanted to see, given the more recent research, that the disease is typically not transmitted through touching services. We'll still be doing thorough cleanings, but we could use that Wednesday for additional instruction. Secondly, we're going to obviously continue to follow social distancing protocols. And that will have an effect on how many kids we can fit into classrooms as we go forward. And thirdly, which I've already mentioned, the elementary teachers were really, really concerned throughout the year, starting last summer when we were developing plans that elementary school kids need direct instruction, direct interaction, direct help and support from their homeroom teachers daily, which is why we had the morning and afternoon arrangements so that every child was interacting with his or her teacher every single day, either directly, either in person or remotely. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So just to review quickly, our timeline, we started in early October with Phase One, which was to start our return to school. I've already explained cohorts A, B, and C for Arcata Five youngsters. I'm excluding our pre-Ks for a moment, but I should let you know that the pre-Ks have been perhaps our greatest success story. They've been going since the beginning of the school year, and in some cases, four and five days, full days. And we've, they've in person, and they've just functioned beautifully. So some of them have been with our partners, with the Y and some other groups, and some have been in our own schools. As well during Phase One, we brought in special ed youngsters, some of our other vulnerable pupils and our English language learners, so that they could come in as well, so that they would, we'd be sure to be focusing on their needs. And in many cases, we had them coming in four days a week instead of two. In other words, they would come in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, so that we could give them more direct in-person instruction where we could. Come January, we went into Phase Two. What we did there was we combined where we couldn't, in kindergarten, first grade, instead of having A cohorts and B cohorts, we combined them into a new A-B cohort. This was with the approval of our medical professionals. And back at the January meeting, if you were there, you saw a video of how, for example, at Community Park School, they converted their cafeteria into a classroom for kindergarteners so they could bring back larger group of kids, still keep them socially distanced and so forth. And we did that across all four elementary schools. So all of our kindergarten and first grade youngsters who want, whose parents wanted to come back, came back for four days because they were able to come back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, since there was not an A group and a B group. There was now an A-B group. Similarly, for kids in grades two through five who had special needs, whose teachers identified them as needing some extra support, we made, we brought them back where we had room in their classrooms. The cohorts weren't overloaded. If we had three or four kids, we could fit several more in, in a classroom. So we brought back some pupils in grades two through five across all four schools. Starting next month, we'll be going into Phase Three, where we will be consolidating our second grades. We've been, Dr. Glass, I've visited schools. We've looked at floor plans. We've worked with principals, and we've identified enough spaces, sometimes with some juggling, so that we can bring back all of our second graders, starting March 15th, again, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday mornings, the way we've been doing successfully with our kindergarteners and first grade teachers. And I might say as an aside, most of the K-1 teachers whom I've spoken to actually like the fact that they have most of their kids back. They find it closer to normal teaching, and they've really felt that they've been able to flourish with their kids, and the kids have been able to thrive in that environment. We're also going to bring back in, starting on March 15th, any classes in grades three through five where the, combining the in-school cohorts will not violate the social distancing requirements. So that may be on a case-by-case basis. So we may have, for example, one third grade class in a school that is coming in four days in the morning because they're now a cohort A-B instead of a cohort A or a cohort B. But we may have two or three other classes in the same grade, in the same, in the same school whom we can't bring in because those, those classrooms have just too many kids, and we can't accommodate them. And we've now basically scoured the schools, and we can no longer identify any other big spaces that we can use to bring them in. But to the extent that we can bring in as many more children as possible in grades three through five, we will. And then after spring break in April, we'll be at Phase Four. And that's when we will be using Wednesdays as another in-person instructional day. So for the combined cohorts, the A-B cohorts, they'll attend all five mornings. And for the classes that unfortunately we can't bring in because we don't have space to make them a combined cohort, so they'll still be either cohort A or cohort B. We'll still be using Wednesdays, but we'll be using Wednesdays on an alternating week basis. So those children will come in one week. Cohort A will come in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Cohort B will come in Thursday, Friday, the following week. Cohort A will come in only Monday, Tuesday, and Cohort B will come in Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And to give you a sense of how we've progressed over the year, Matt, if we could have the last slide, please? And to give you a sense of how we've progressed over the year, Matt, if we could have the last slide, please. So this is looking at our in-person cohorts since. Since October, so what's that say? Oh, so it last fall. We started out, the way best to read this chart is to look at. The same colors in different parts of our program, of our phasing, so. For example, we began the school year basically with almost every elementary school youngster who was in school. Was in, was coming in two mornings per week in the model I just described. Currently, because we were able to bring our Ks and ones in. Four mornings a week and some other youngsters in four mornings a week as well. We're currently down to about five hundred and forty-eight youngsters who are coming in. Two days a week, two mornings a week, and by April twelfth, which will be our return from spring break. We're not going to have any more kids coming in only two mornings a week, so you can see the progression that we've been able to make. Maintaining safety and all the protocols that we've had. At the same time, last fall, we started out with some youngsters, particularly, as I said, special needs youngsters, limited group of youngsters. Who were coming in four mornings a week. When we brought in our kindergartens and first graders as combined groups and some other youngsters as well, we were able to increase that to three hundred and ninety-five youngsters. And going forward, it looks like we've, we've decreased to two hundred and fifty-two youngsters as our projection for April, but I'll get back to that in a moment. Because if you go to our April twelfth projection, you'll see that we've now added in that two, three, that two mornings, three mornings rotation. So every youngster will be in at least, I guess, the equivalent of two and a half. Days a week or, or five days every two weeks, so we have four hundred and thirty-two youngsters, we project coming in there. And there's fewer kids coming in four days a week because, as I indicated, we're going to be using Wednesday, so a whole bunch of kids will be jumping. To five days a week as well, so that's just to give you an idea that we've been able to have success. And again, Dr. Glass will mention it earlier, we've had no transmissions that we're aware of, that we've been able to track in our schools. So we've done it safely, but we're bringing back the youngsters to the extent that we can. Thanks. You're, you're muted, Dr. Glass.
Thank you, Bob. I, I know there are a number of questions in the chat from, from interested parents. Principals and Dr. Ginsburg and I will be holding Zooms, individual Zooms for elementary parents and we're working with the middle school principal. And also the acting senior highest principal, so over the next week, parents will have an opportunity to have. Question and answer periods with us, so we appreciate the questions in the chat, we'll gather them. And we'll make them part of the presentation so that we can give you complete answers when we do the individual Zoom, so principals will be zooming with their PTOs. And community members, and then Dr. Ginsburg and I will be available on request to. Also provide some guidance with regard to the transition to normal. Mr. Burr.
Thank you very much, Dr. Glasso. Want to share this evening, if I can, with everybody, a short presentation that we have put together. Let me cut that out. Try that button instead, there we go, it's a better button. So good evening, everybody, from Princeton Unified Middle School, we are talking about phasing up our instruction. And just want to remind everybody about the road back. We've been on the road back since July and August, we came up with a plan this summer that we would open school successfully. We want to thank our teachers who have worked very hard to build new skills. Put new tools in their toolbox and we are very grateful to the staff at Princeton Unified Middle School for being on this road back with us. Our goals coming into this year, and I think it's important to remember where we were in July and August when we met with all of our family groups. As Dr. Glasso just indicated, we would be doing so again. We met with all of our family groups and rolled out these plans, the first goal was to keep everybody safe, healthy and well. That was the primary goal, and then one A, of course, because we're a school, we're in the business of educating. Focusing on providing a rich, robust learning experience in spite of this pandemic. That addresses learning gaps that have persisted long before the pandemic hit. Noble goals. I want to remind everybody that the health and safety guidelines that we were placed under in order to be able to open schools. And I'm not going to read this whole list to you, but classrooms reduced to desks six feet apart. Face masks required of everyone, our students have been wonderful at complying with this. I'm so proud of our kids. Classroom capacities no greater than fifty percent or sixty-four square feet per person. Again, reducing building visitors, encouraging hand washing, making sure we're not sharing equipment. Pencils, pens, markers, all of those things. And of course, our families have been diligent about filling out the daily contact tracing. And the contact tracing that our nurses have been involved in, in case we do have to check and make sure that. We have to make sure that people haven't been in close contact with somebody. All of this in conjunction has made this a very safe opening to the school year at Princeton Unified Middle School, and it has been a total team effort. So again, the road back, phase one, we had PD and teachers learned a brand-new online learning platform and. Put all of their efforts in making lessons be ready for that first day of school on September fourteenth. And of course, phase two, we were remote from September fourteenth all the way through, we were for construction. On October twenty-sixth, we returned to hybrid instruction at Princeton Unified Middle School once the. Construction was over, and I think it is worth noting that due to the things that we put in place and the health and safety standards we put in place. We did not have any shutdowns from the building due to any kind of a health risk. In addition, there's been other highlights, we've welcomed back our A and B cohorts, we have a C cohort that continues to learn virtually. We have recently piloted a cohort D and a cohort E made up of students that we. Have deemed have targeted learning needs and are bringing back in a more consistent basis. And again, I'm very grateful that we have managed to keep everybody safe and well. Some of our families have recently asked about the breakdown of numbers at our school. And so in a very transparent fashion, we have put together this slide for you. This is cohort A, for example, again, we have a cohort A and a cohort B. We currently have two hundred and fifty-six students in our cohort A attending school. Each week that it is cohort A's week to attend. And by the same token, we have two hundred and thirty-three attending in cohort B. This is worth noting and we have some more numbers to share. We currently, well, in October, we had five hundred and sixty-two students attending hybrid, we were at seventy percent. Through the fall, the spike in the winter, the holiday season, we are still at sixty-one point one percent hybrid. Worth noting, our teachers have really worked hard to give our kids a good experience and our kids want to be in school. And again, I can't thank everybody enough for the team effort that is, that has taken place as a result. So where do we go from here? Again, the road back and we're on a different place on the road than we were in July and August, and I appreciate that. We haven't changed our goals to keeping people healthy and safe, but effective March first. It is being proposed that we will, instead of. Making office hours be a more open sort of thing, we are going to create targeted instruction periods. Using our community period from two to three ten each afternoon. We will be requiring our students to log in with their community period teachers. I see many of our former students are on the call this evening and I'm happy to see so many of you out this evening. Some of you know that we've been passionate about getting community period off the ground and middle school community period. Is a time where we, well, an advisory program is a cornerstone middle school structure. And so we have students placed at about a twelve to one ratio with a caring adult. And in this time between two and three ten, students will be logged in, they'll take attendance with their community period teacher. And they may be called for some assistance by one of their core teachers or one of their encore teachers. We are also beginning next month, there are plans to take back Fridays to hybrid instruction on March twelfth. March nineteenth and March twenty-sixth, so that is three weeks, three Fridays in March. We will not have as remote Fridays, there's a plan in place for us to have hybrid instruction on those three Fridays. So adding in three school days of free in-person hybrid instruction days. Once more, by maintaining our targeted instruction approach for the next five weeks, we will be able to continue to give. Tiered levels of support to combat learning loss, to give people extra attention. To make sure that there's time for one-on-one direct instruction. To allow for small group instruction, for kids to work together, all of the things that happen while also providing a place for kids to. Complete their asynchronous work in a more formalized fashion. To make sure that they are dedicating that time from two to three ten every day to finish assignments so that hopefully. And I know I've heard a lot about kids talking about working long into the night. By providing that targeted two to three ten time, we hope that we're giving a little more structure to kids to finish their work. This is an example of what our schedule will look like. Again, that target instruction, our day will still end at one o'clock for the next five weeks. Students will travel home, they will have lunch, they will log back into our community period at two ten with their, with, at two o'clock. With their community period teacher, that will happen virtually for the next five weeks through April fourth. Beginning on April twelfth. The plan is to bring back students for a full day of school, that means we will have school. For the entirety of the fourth marking period, this is the plan that we are currently operating under. Students will have eighty-minute periods of instruction. There will be a one-hour lunch recess and drop everything and read that will be placed between blocks two and three. Therefore, giving everybody an hour-long break from the screen between blocks two and three. It's important to note that we, as we want to do this and, and increase the school day, we are going to continue to maintain the health and safety features. That we have had in place. This is an example of that schedule that I just described and what that looks like. Again, students will continue to have their four blocks, those blocks will move from sixty-minute blocks to eighty-minute blocks. And there is a one-hour block for lunch recess and drop everything and read that also doubles as an hour-long. Break from the screen. This is a little bit of what our lunch rotation will look like, we have some things to iron out and says so at the bottom. We are going to look into the logistics of doing this, but this is our basic shell of a plan, this is iteration one. And again, we want to thank everybody for being on the road back with us and. This is a first step to putting forward the, the road forward. Once more, very grateful to Tim Charleston, Stephanie DeCarlo, and to all of our staff for helping us think through some of these things. We're very grateful to you and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Mr. Warren.
Thanks, Dr. Glass, so thank you, Jason and Dr. Ginsburg. Alright, so, good evening, everyone, and again, welcome. And we're going to be discussing Princeton High School, transition to normal, focusing on the months of March and April. Just to give a background and re-entry timeline of PHS in this school year. As we all know, in September, we started off with. The device distribution and teacher training and staff training on Canvas, our new learning platform. October nineteenth, hybrid learning began at PHS. In November, the creation of the combined cohort D, which I'm going to speak to in, in more context in a little bit. The, the cohort D at PHS is focused on students who are. Students who are, are most neediest, and the, the thought behind that was students who are. In need, need to be in PHS to, you know, both weeks, not in either cohort A or B. So that was, that was created in November and we still have that, and like I just said, it's going to be put in further context momentarily. On December of January, we did have a lot of remote learning. Due to the winter break, we were in all remote for portions of December and January. Fast forwarding to February, where we are right now. Our goal was to simplify and streamline our, our hybrid and remote schedules, which we're going to speak to in a little bit. And then now expand our cohort D, which is in progress at this time. So just to talk a little bit about cohort merging at PHS. Couple of weeks ago, PHS families that have students in cohorts A and B were surveyed. To see if they would like their students to be. In a merged cohort cohort D for them to come in both weeks. And, and be full-time in-person learners. So with our survey, we got, we got three hundred and forty-nine responses, one hundred no's and two hundred and forty-nine yeses. So just the breakdown of our process. The, the first step with this process was to prioritize populations such as our special education students. Students with five oh fours, students on our DNF list, and that came to be about forty-six students. We also did, we also randomized students who answered yes in the survey. To keep it fair and equitable instead of picking and choosing, if you will, so that was, that was, that was an important part of the process for us. So after randomizing and prioritizing our populations, we looked at student schedules. We looked at room capacity, transportation. It was a, and it still is, it's a pretty intense process and I need to give a shout out to my two assistant principals who are working tirelessly. At it. And we, what we do is we look student by student to make sure that that student would be able to come in safely, social distance. And keep a safe, keep a safe classroom environment for each of their schedules. So we're looking at the potential of eight different classrooms instead of one or maybe two classrooms, so it's, it's pretty intense. As of today, we have over a hundred students in cohort D. And it's our expectation to add another thirty to fifty in the next ten days, which we are looking at right now. So we recently, as of this past Monday, welcomed thirty, about thirty-six students back into the combined cohort. And we're looking to continue to add more in the next ten days and we're going to keep. Adding based on the survey results and based on whether the capacity is, is safe or not. We have had a very, you know, low flexibility in. Possibly changing classrooms to accommodate more students coming back into the building because we do have some functional. Space concerns at PHS, as I'm sure everyone is aware of, but we are, we are doing it piece by piece and. You know, we're, we're going to continue to get after that, so right there is our current cohort numbers. Currently cohort, we have two hundred and twenty-one students in cohort A, one hundred and thirty-nine in B. And one thousand seventy-two in cohort C. Our cohort D students is a hundred and eighteen, so they are in. PHS in person, eight out of the ten days of the week, which is set to expand. So looking ahead to March, similar to my colleague, Mr. Burr, we're looking at. Starting March eighth and which will reflect the first Friday of March twelfth. All Monday through Friday, start time will be at eight twenty AM. One of the eight twenty, eight twenty AM, excuse me. And three twelve will be the first date for a in-person Friday. One of the, you know, big. Big pieces of information that was shared with us from students and staff was that we need. There, there's a need for consistency and a need for consistency for our most vulnerable populations. And that, that really was the driving force behind making that eight twenty start time universal. Both remote and hybrid. We also are including the targeted instruction period, which was our formerly known as office hours. Teachers and staff will maintain documented accounts of student attendance and their performance or accomplishments. And on, as you will see in the next slide, the schedule, we have scheduled office hours based on subject. But then that also, that also includes other subjects to, you know, provide asynchronous assignments for our students. During those times. So as you can see here, this is the March hybrid schedule that will be effective March eighth for that week. And as I previously noted, we have consistent start time of eight twenty, Monday through Friday. Our peer group and community service time will be moved to two o'clock, and that was to accommodate our students during the break and transit time, so it's not rushed. And students and staff will have enough time to get where they need to be in terms of that, that period. We will maintain our sixty-minute periods and we will maintain the passing time of thirteen minutes between periods during this time. Also, as you can see below, what I noted before with the targeted learning periods, they are assigned by day. Let me go back. They are assigned by day, they are twenty-five minute periods per day. Each subject meets twice per week and that's assigned. And as I said, the subjects that are not assigned will have asynchronous assignments for students. Just to give a little breakdown of what our targeted instruction and our asynchronous instruction period looks like. We, when I met with our staff, and I'm going to give another shout out to our building reentry advisory team, we did look over various points of importance, so student engagement, defining our targeted learning period, and what that looks like at PHS. So a couple of the, the points that I want to acknowledge are one-to-one and direct instruction, small group instructional periods, allowing time for alternate assignments for students, student collaboration, PBL, which we've really, has really taken off the PHS in the past couple of years, and we want to maintain that. You know, and just reviewing comprehension, process content and assessment as well. And as I said, if you're, if you are not scheduled during a day of targeted instruction, then subjects, subject area teachers will be providing asynchronous work for, for students. So moving forward to April at PHS, we are expanding the all five days in person and it's expanded, and that's key here, it's instructional days. We're going to continue our targeted instruction asynchronous instruction period. Teachers are also going to continue to maintain logs of their accomplishments, and that's really giving us a lot of good feedback on student needs and really giving us an idea of what, you know, what's occurring during that, during that time. And, you know, I've been giving shout outs, I can't forget the teachers of PHS who, you know, are working tirelessly and really, you know, really taking the targeted learning period and using it to full effect. Also, I want to say with the, with April, we're also going to be looking at tiger time, bringing tiger time back to PHS and then continuing peer grouping community service. I'm going to go over the schedule on the next slide, but I also want to mention too that we're looking to have tents come back to PHS on PHS grounds this spring. We're requesting another tent. And, you know, the district has been extremely generous with providing that, and I thank you for it. We're also with the full day expanded instruction. We're also looking at having lunch on campus. So lunch will be outdoors on campus during our break period, which I will show you now. So now, last night, I had the pleasure of meeting with our student body. We had about a hundred and thirty-eight students who we met with and we proposed to them a schedule of seventy-five, seventy-five minute blocks and got a lot of feedback from them and got more feedback from them today. And we decided to change our course of action a little bit and focus on, you know, student voice and this schedule that we have right here. So we're looking at sixty-minute blocks of, of time, ENF days. So as you notice, it's, it's slightly different because we are going full day. So we do have to incorporate more instructional time here. So what it is, is we have our traditional E-day, periods three, one, seven, five. We're going to have a forty-minute break time because I know, you know, at PHS, we value having a good break in the middle of the day. Students can eat, students can relax, do what they need to do. We're going to come back and have that period five right there for sixty minutes. And then the last part of it is a rotating block of a period that corresponds with their, their letter day. Now, that piece is, right now, that piece is, it's designed to focus on several areas such as, you know, project-based learning. It could be asynchronous time, it could be, you know, time for students to, you know, further collaborate with teachers and so forth. But most importantly, and what we're going to get at is this time is going to be defined by a team of administrators, staff members, teachers and students. And we're going to really look at that and define it and, and give it some, give it some value and make it, make it ours, make it PHS. So that's, that's what we're going to be looking to do as we approach April. I do want to point out the, the, the last period of the day, which is two thirty-five to three twenty-one. Monday through Wednesday, we will have our targeted instruction period. Thursdays from two thirty-five to three twenty-one, we have our tiger time period. And tiger time is when students are available, teachers are available for students. Students get to collaborate with each other on projects or whatever it might be. Students get to play basketball in the old gym if, if they wish, pending social distance requirements, and I'm sure Mr. Dubinsky could help me out with that. And then it's also time for our student clubs to meet. Our student clubs, over a hundred and twenty student clubs, and we, we do an excellent job with that. And, you know, we, we're trying to during this time, maintain the, the clubs as best as we can and give it its full effectiveness. And Mrs. Ligas, my dean of students, does a wonderful job communicating with the kids and, and, you know, so we're, we're going to look back to, you know, capture that time on Thursdays, starting in April twelfth. And then Fridays are going to be our set peer group community service time from two thirty-five to three twenty-one. So that is all I have here for PHS for March and April. Just want to thank everyone for their time and I appreciate everyone, everyone listening, so thank you.
Jared, thank you very much for making the presentation. And, you know, one of the considerations for that block of time that you were talking about, and when you work with the student groups and teaching staff, could be, could be a mental health collaborative, where students are working with, providing different kinds of mental health support for one another and doing some collaborative work with that period. That may be a big benefit after this long COVID hibernation that we all faced. So it may be just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Brian, I know that you, Ryan and Pat Lenahan are going to make a quick presentation on our athletic program for the spring and also our music and fine arts. And we're going to talk a little bit about, Jared already mentioned the clubs that Diana Lingus, who had her second COVID shot today, is a little bit under the weather. But all of our clubs and activities will be operational this spring. And faculty and staff are welcome to meet with their clubs outside or in, in, in school, based on our medical protocols and social distancing. So that, that piece is in place. So Brian, want to talk a little bit about the athletics?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Galasso. I want to share my screen for everyone to see. And hopefully you're seeing what I'm seeing. Let's take everyone back to where we started this journey with COVID nineteen in the, in the, actually it was over the summer. Back in June, we formed the COVID nineteen Athletic Safety Committee. We met regularly to prepare for fall sports. And we monitored the CDC, the NJBOH, NJBOE, JSIA and local, our local health department. And when push came to shove, we produced a COVID nineteen health and safety plan for a varsity-only sport program at Princeton High School. I created a process as part of that plan for screening athletes, spectators and coaches. All coaches, parents and athletes were required to attend a webinar that I hosted in the evening before the start date. Due to the strict physical distancing guidelines that we had in place, that were incorporated in our health and safety plan, we needed to utilize all the field space at Princeton High School, our road fields, Princeton Unified Middle School, and even Johnson Park Elementary School for a cross-country program. COVID nineteen safety protocols and procedures were closely monitored. And we had a rapid response system for contractor tracing, tracing, which was very successful. So after we experienced success, we then had hired more coaches that were board-approved. And we opened up the fall programs to lower-level teams who began meaningful practices and then later they began having junior varsity and freshman teams. Moving to the winter, our COVID nineteen Health and Safety Committee met and we needed to make some revisions to our health and safety plan. The American Pediatric Association did recommend universal masking for participating in indoor sports and outdoor sports at that time. So that was included in our version of the Health and Safety Plan for Winter Sports. With the help of Dr. Galasso and myself, lobbied with other area superintendents and administrators, who agreed to play a varsity-only schedule supporting universal masking. At the time, during the winter season, we were faced with a difficult challenge because NJSI did not support universal masking for indoor sports. But two weeks into the season, the Center for Disease Control changed their position and they did recommend universal masking. So we were spot on with our prediction and universal masking being a good preventative measure for the spread of COVID nineteen during game play. Due to the strict guidelines of the COVID nineteen Health and Safety Plan, we need to utilize the indoor space at PHS and Princeton Unified Middle School. Our department was able to stream indoor winter sports games for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, swimming and fencing, and with the help of our booster club, was streaming games for our boys' ice hockey team. Once spectators were permitted to attend indoor sporting events, parent and guardian spectator passes were issued for specific sports. And the CDC quickly moved and we were providing school with a parent spectator roster and parents showed photo IDs and were able to come and attend games, games with physical distancing guidelines. And our planning, our Health and Safety Committee continues to plan for our upper sprint sports program for middle school. Currently.
Brian, can I stop you? Something's wrong with your, your sound. If you could get a little closer to the mic, because you're going in and out.
Okay, I'll try again here. Can you hear me better?
Yes, fine.
Okay, spring sports at Princeton Public Schools, the COVID nineteen Athletics Health and Safety Committee created the first draft of our Health and Safety Plan for spring sports, which currently includes universal masking for outdoor sports programs at the high school and the middle school. But we're, we're hoping for the best, but we're planning for the worst and that could be subject to change. The current PHS spring, spring sports plan includes a varsity and junior varsity levels. We have not had any freshman levels at any of our sprint sports programs at Princeton High School. So the current plan for Princeton Unified Middle School includes interneural programs, boys' and girls' basketball, and it includes A and B teams for sports that we're going to be offering. As of Monday, February twenty-second, online athletic registration was open for both Princeton High School and Princeton Unified Middle School. All coaches, athletes and parents, friends will be required to attend the COVID nineteen Health and Safety Orientational webinar hosted by myself in the evening prior to the start of spring sports. So as you'll see here, this is posted on the athletics website and we are offering baseball at the high school and we're, we plan to offer baseball at the middle school. But our, our start dates will have to be determined and we have opened up athletic registration. At the middle school, you'll see we'll be offering interneural boys' basketball and girls' basketball. Our high school will have our co-ed golf team, our high school will have a boys' lacrosse program. Depending on enrollment, we'll have a varsity and JV program. Middle school will have an A and B team for boys', boys' lacrosse if there's enough interest. Across the lacrosse program, we'll have varsity and JV team if there's enough interest. And our lacrosse program at the middle school will have an A and B team. Our spring track at the high school will have a boys' team and will also have a girls' team. Softball typically, we were having a varsity and JV team in the past, we hope to have that again. Softball at the middle school, we typically have one softball team. At the high school, we have spring girls' track. And at the middle school, we have a spring co-ed track program. And we also have boys' tennis and varsity and JV this spring. So as an outcome of the Health and Safety Committee, we did create a COVID nineteen info site that is used to disseminate information to parents and I go over that information at the orientation. So if anyone would like to mine that information and do some further research, you can visit this website, which is available on both the middle school athletics website and the high school athletics website. We have our current winter sport COVID nineteen Health and Safety Plan here. Here's the proposal that's currently the first draft of the spring sport Health and Safety Plan. And here is our Princeton Unified Middle School full Health and Safety Prevention Plan, which is loosely completed. So if you click on this area here, you'll be able to read this draft of the Health and Safety Plan, which is available on the athletics website.
All right, well, thank you, Brian. So a full athletic, a full spring athletic schedule and interneural program for both the high school and the, and so we're real pleased with that and hopefully there will be some competition for the middle school when the other schools make their decision about their participation. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Mr. Lenahan.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Galasso. I want to thank everybody for, for being here tonight and for your support and the opportunity to update you on the status of the arts in Princeton Public Schools. Our students have been so resilient and our outstanding arts teachers have found new ways to instruct and continue the student participation in the visual and performing arts, which is a critical part of every child's education. And especially important when we are feeling isolated and separated and really need a way to connect and come together to express ideas, thoughts, feelings in artistic ways. So let's take a look at where we've been. And we began as, as all subject areas did in September with all remote instruction. And then when we moved to the hybrid model, instruction for wind instruments and choir was held outdoors in tents, which you may have seen on our properties. And then with the colder weather, it was not possible to continue the outdoor music instruction. So we moved to remote music in December and January and continued that in most of our programs today. But I am pleased to announce that with the support of our local medical professionals, we are in week three of a trial phase with two of our bands at Princeton High School doing indoor rehearsals. And there was actually a rehearsal tonight going on in our Performing Arts Center. And we have been very successful in, in those efforts and look forward to completing that trial phase in the coming weeks. As we look at the five core mitigation strategies that we rely on, these mitigation strategies are based on guidance from the CDC, from the National Federation of High Schools and our local health officials. They include five areas, first being masks, and we mask everything. We mask our faces and we mask all of our instruments. And this helps to reduce the aerosol spread throughout the, the room. Our instrument masks either have a bell cover with a MERV thirteen filter built inside or for our woodwind instruments, they're actually played inside of a bag, which prevents those aerosols from escaping. We also rely on our HVAC system, which is fitted with either MERV eight or MERV thirteen filters as well as needlepoint bipolar ionization and ensure that we have at least three complete air changes per hour in all of our music facilities. We utilize appropriate social distancing for these activities, always at least six feet of social distance. And oftentimes is, is much more than that, especially in our larger spaces like our auditoriums. We use a similar screening process that the athletic department uses with temperature checks and a, in a health questionnaire. All of our students use their own instruments and music. And any shared equipment like large percussion instruments or keyboard instruments are sanitized between uses. The whole space is always cleaned by our custodial staff at the end of each rehearsal. And then we also limit the amount of time that students are engaged in active playing and singing. We limit it to thirty minutes of active playing and singing, followed by fifteen-minute breaks. We limit it to 30 minutes of active playing and singing, followed by 15-minute breaks for our HVAC system to do its job. As I said, we're still in the trial phase of Phase 2A in our plan. We started with our outdoor music instruction and now we're in this trial phase for studio band and jazz ensemble. If we are successful with that, that phase, which we so far have been, we'll consult with our medical team again to see if we can move into Phase 2B on March 8th. And that will enable all of our middle school and high school bands and choirs to rehearse during the school day indoors. And then eventually we plan to move into Phase 2C, where we will expand this indoor music instruction to our elementary schools after spring break. Just a few closing notes. We've talked a lot about music tonight, but I want to assure you that our visual art, drama, dance, and strings programs have continued in person since October with all the appropriate mitigation strategies. We have been so grateful and really fully utilized all the new student technologies that the district has purchased for all of the students, especially in our arts programs. And with that new technology, we have already produced nine virtual concerts, three virtual plays, and one virtual art show, which you saw a little sneak peek of earlier in the meeting. We do plan for a spring season of concerts, plays, and art shows to be virtual as well at this point in time. We know that our remote arts instruction has been robust, but it cannot replace the excellent in-person arts programs that we are all accustomed to in Princeton. So we are looking forward to a return to a more normal type of program. And I want to thank you all for all of your support and turn the presentation back over to Dr. Galasso.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate that. Just a couple of quick comments. Tomorrow night, we'll be meeting with middle school parents at the town hall. I think that's for the, looking at the 2122 school year. But I'm sure there will probably be a few minutes to talk a little bit about some of the Pooms recommendations that have been made tonight. We will be announcing other opportunities for parents to have input and have conversation with Dr. Ginsburg and myself and the building principals at the elementary schools and also Mr. Warren at the high school and his staff. Those dates will be announced in the next few days. And at that time, I am, our presentation is complete. And thank you for your attention. I'm sorry it took a little longer than normal, but I think it was important information to give out to the community and I'm glad that we have so many people on the Zoom tonight. So thanks to all the presenters and I do appreciate your time and effort. And that completes the report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Galasso. That certainly was a lot of information and we do appreciate the comprehensive presentation to the board and to the community. And, you know, all the hard work done by you guys, I know this has been developing. We've been hearing about it and, and it's kind of day to day and you're coming up with solutions as, as the, as the challenges hit you and we are grateful for that. Could I just ask, before I ask the board for questions, could you just repeat again? If people have questions about their particular schools, where should they take those? Because obviously we're a board meeting. We're hearing this information. We'll ask you some questions ourselves, but there's a lot more questions that we're going to be able to deal with and we'll hear public comment, but it won't be a Q and A. So where should they go with their questions?
Well, they should go immediately to the building principals. They have the best and most updated information. But Dr. Ginsburg and myself are always available to support any of the elementary schools and the middle and the high school. But as I indicated, the elementary principals will be holding Zooms with their PTOs and interested parents. So will the middle school and the high school. And we will be scheduling some further, further information sessions as they become necessary.
Thank you. Daphna?
Hi. So thank you everyone for the presentation. It was great. Dr. Galasso, I was just wondering, so we're going to be hearing from our student reps and then we're going to be hearing from members of the public. Are these plans now set in stone or is there room for modification?
Well, the plans are just that. I mean, our, our initial plans for, for March are, are pretty much developed. The plans for April will be dependent on a number of factors. You know, right now the community is in, on one website, orange and another website, yellow. If that were to move to a red or there would be a, a spread as be, as they're predicting around April 1 with the new strand of the virus, then that could change the plans. Plans are, you know, I, I, education is fluid. So plans are fluid. Just like the high school is looking at that 60-minute period in the, in the, in the afternoon and they're developing that. As Mr. Warren indicated in his presentation, that's a fluid piece. Some kids will be engaged in it, some will not. Some will be doing independent studies. Some will be preparing for AP exams. Some will be doing independent research. Some will be doing project-based learning. So those things are always fluid and they should be fluid. It should be, it should be decided between the teacher and the, and the student and the, and the administration just should approve whatever program that they're going to put together. So I would say the plans are fluid.
Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I guess I have a few comments and questions. The first is that there is a huge volume of questions in the chat. I hope somebody's trying to keep track of those. I know that Dr. Ginsburg is amazingly responsive, but there are a lot there. And if, if we aren't able to get to all of them tonight, perhaps in the coming days, our administrators could reply to members of the public who've asked questions that haven't been addressed. Second thing is, I just want to say that it's amazing to have so many students present tonight. And I think that's a sign, obviously, that particularly at the high school, that this is a topic of great interest to them. And I would just observe that from much feedback that we've heard from students, you know, they, they feel that their voices weren't heard. They didn't get to have a chance to sort of comment on, you know, changes that have a great effect on their, on their lives. And I, I, I know we'll probably hear from some of them during public comment, but I just hope we can encourage our administrators understanding that this is COVID and the velocity of decision-making is really extraordinary and very, very difficult. And we've gotten all sorts of confusing guidance from the, the state throughout this time. But to the extent we can listen to our students, to the extent that we can solicit their, their opinions, I think that that, that should be a very high priority, not just now, but, but all the time. One observation is just the, the huge difference in numbers and hybrid learning at the elementary school and middle school versus the high school. And I know from my own experience as a parent of a, a high school student, that for many students, I thought, teaching, it hasn't felt differentiated. So, so many people, we had a large hybrid contingent to begin with, that's dropped dramatically. And to the extent that our administrators and our teachers are, are, are working, and I know that they are, and I'm very grateful for all that work. I hope they will continue to think about ways to make the in-person experience as compelling as possible. So it will be more attractive to more students to be in the building with the masks and with the social distancing, but to be in the building with their peers and engaging, you know, in person. And I'm not suggesting that's easy. I just hope that we can spend as much energy and time and be as creative as possible to try to think how to do that. And then, and then lastly, as a parent of a senior, I really can't imagine a worse senior year for high schoolers. And I know a lot of the seniors and their resilience is absolutely remarkable. But I hope that as we, we look to March and April and May and June, we can do everything in our power to give the seniors a taste of what a real senior year should be, particularly senior spring. And that, that's going beyond the classroom and it's going to require additional work and creativity. But I really hope that we will do everything we can to give our seniors something more than, than we've been able to give them as they approach graduation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone so much who presented. I want to thank our nearly 1,000 people who've attended. Brian, you noted all of our students. We have also a great number of staff members on this call and I really want to thank them for taking time this evening to be here. I know we have a lot of parents here. So I just, I want to echo some of Brian's comments. We are listening. I was very eager to get this plan. We received it this afternoon. We are listening. We are learning. We are looking forward to, to putting the best plan forward. And we thank very much our staff for, for their work in putting this together. So again, just reiterating, we are listening and we are, we are hearing all of you. So thank you for being here.
Anyone else like to comment from the board? Okay, if there's no comments from the board, Dr. Galasso, did you want to address the calendar before we get to the student board member report?
Yeah, I just want to mention that for tonight, for an information item, and next month we'll vote on the calendar. The calendar for the 2122 school year is been vetted through the PTOC, through the PTOs. And also it's been given to the board in various iterations over the last six weeks. So, you know, we'd invite any comment with regard to the calendar. And we would like to place it on the agenda next month for approval so that parents and students can plan with regard to next year's schedule.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the calendar? Betsy?
Thank you. You know me, I always have questions on the calendar. Who should, two questions actually. Members of the public, if they have comments on the calendar or staff members, who do they address those to, Barry?
They can, they can email my office. They can email the PPS, you know, website. We monitor that every single day. So, or they could send their comments and questions to Elizabeth Collier.
Okay.
Or my executive assistant, Susan McGreevy.
Thank you very much. So we'll vote on this then on, at the March meeting. I had a question. I noticed there, I know we have five PD days, professional development days next year. I noticed three are prior to the start of school. Do, do you believe we need that third day on September 8th? Is that something our teachers need? I also noticed Easter Monday was put back in the calendar that had not been in there in, in past year. And I know it had been there in the past, but not recently. So I didn't know if there was any, any specific information on those.
Easter Monday was put into the calendar because it was indicated that that was called, that was a part of the, part of the Princeton culture to have Easter Monday because of a travel day. So it was placed in the calendar. As far as the PD days are concerned, we do believe we need the three PD days. Teachers need to get ready for the next school year. You know, I would imagine if things were to continue to progress, facts and teachers are vaccinated and general public is vaccinated and there may be some herd immunity, I would imagine that 90% of the people will want in-person full-day instruction next year. So again, it'll be another pivot, but teachers will have to shift to that. We also have some significant construction that's being proposed for the summer in two of the elementary schools. You also have a renovation project at the high school. So it probably is in the best interest for the next calendar year to, even though Labor Day is late and really we don't like the late start, it's probably in the board's best interest, I think, for next year to, to maintain the calendar.
Great. Okay. So I know, I know members of the public may ask, Labor Day is the sixth, Rosh Hashanah is the seventh. This third day would be the eighth, so students would return the ninth. So thank you for taking the time to address that, Barry.
You're welcome.
And I just want to add, I have concerns about the calendar too. I will email them to Dr. Galasso. I think we're starting school too late and I think Easter Monday has not been a holiday for our district in, in a few years. I, I think we should let the student reps speak as soon as possible.
I have some comments on the calendar first. I agree. We, Easter Monday has not been something that we've had. And I do know we have construction and I've mentioned to you several times, I'm concerned about us starting later. I also want to say that as of 2018, there are 22 voting districts in Princeton. Eight of them vote in our four elementary schools. Prior to COVID, our students physically attended school 180 days. And every day we have visitors who must sign at the office before entering our buildings. The town approve a referendum to approve safety and entrances at every school. On election day, we let anyone enter our schools without signing in or showing ID. When we are voting in our schools, we keep our students separate and far away from voting going on. Our students lose the ability to have gym class, recess, or lunch in the all-purpose rooms. People bring up the fact we need our students to see our democratic process. It would be great to have our students see this, but with the climate of school shootings and strangers, we keep our students far away from the voting process. Per NJSA 1918-2, which states, preference and location shall be given to schools and public buildings where space shall be made available by the authorities in charge upon request. If same can be done without detrimental interruption of school. Continuing to have elections in our schools, to me, is detrimental to our elementary students and their regular school days. I'm requesting that a committee be created to look at moving voting out of our schools for the 2021, 2022 school year. That would be two more days of instructional time. I brought this same request up three years ago. However, prior school administration and prior town leadership did not think it was an important matter. If people are worried about waiting in line to vote prior to COVID, I worked the polls at Riverside. And we were lucky if 100 people from the district I always worked on showed up. So waiting in line is not an issue in Princeton. Several of the other 14 sites used are the Hun School, Johnson Education Center, Suzanne Patterson Center, Hook and Ladder Firehouse, Princeton Municipal Building, the Carl Icon Laboratory, Princeton Charter School, and the Computer Science Building at Princeton. So I'm saying all this because of the calendar, because I would love to move the two election days and make them regular learning days for our students. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. If anyone wants to see the calendar, it is on the agenda. I just saw some questions on that. And otherwise I think we're moving on to our next item. And that is the student board member report. Thank you very much. Maya and Yash, we'd love to hear from you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brand. Hello, board members. Hello to all the students that are here. We have almost, we had 1.900 people. Right now it's about 800. So thank you to all the students that did show up today. I think there are three words that can best describe the last 48 hours in Princeton Public Schools for students and teachers and parents, confusion, frustration, and chaos. The superintendent just presented almost an hour-long presentation on the reopening plan for March and April, which we appreciate and we thank him for that. But at the same time, we have a completely different set of information presented to high schoolers less than 24 hours ago with 75-minute schedule, with 75-minute periods, which I know a couple of board members here, children have seen that schedule. And I think at this point, this is just becoming to the point of not working for students. Mr. McDonald brought up the idea that students don't feel like they're being heard. And I think the email that was sent out at about five o'clock from the districts talking about the reopening and the plan that's being presented today represents exactly that. Yesterday, when the administration at Princeton High School presented that 75-minute period, 75-minute periods later start times, the student body showed up and we said, this is not a good idea. We don't support this and we want to have a voice and a seat at the table at the schedules that are decided going forward. What do we get in return? We got this change of a schedule that is being presented today, but without any real meaningful conversation from students. And I think that's just disrespecting us at this point because the students are struggling this year. We are stressed. We are overwhelmed. We are angry. And we're, after everything the last 48 hours, we're confused as to what exactly the district and the board and the superintendent are trying to do. Because if this is a reopening plan, I think it's pretty fair for students to say, we want to voice in this. And I think it's high time for the board to let us be involved because at the end of the day, this is our future and our education. And I just, we, last week, we, last time we met, we were talking about the survey that, that Maya and I were going to present to you guys today. A couple of the questions on there, I think directly interact with the things the superintendent and the district is trying to do right now, about our workload, our stress levels, and how long we'd like classes to be and how long we'd like our school to be. I think the first number, which the board and the adults in this Zoom should think about, is that 85% of students, of the 645 PHS students that have responded to the survey, have said they have felt overly stressed in the last month due to school. 85% of students. I think that points out that right now, the way we're doing school with this Zoom, with Zoom and everything, is stressing students out. Adding more instructional time, be it an hour-long class at the end of every day or 15 minutes to every period, is not going to help that. And indeed, the survey says exactly that. Right now, about 72% of students say that the times for Zoom right now are just right. 29% say too much, 29% say too much, and about 1%, just 1% are saying that we don't have enough time on Zooms. And I think that again points out the fact that we don't need more time. And I think that again points out the fact that we don't need more time in school. We need more time to ourselves, more time to do work. And I really urge all of you to listen to us. This, the eight hundred people that showed up here today, a lot of them are students. This happened in the last twenty-four hours. We found out what was going on. Maya and I, student council, we spread the word. We sent that letter to you yesterday night, urging all of you to not take these actions, to sit down and listen to students. And again, we're both respectfully respecting, requesting that you do the same, that you don't move forward with any of these proposals for April. You take it back to a committee with students, with teachers, with members of the community. And we can work together and create a real schedule because right now what's happening isn't working. Students should be respected in this and that's all that I'm going to urge all of you to do. I just, I want to close out with a West Wing quote. It's one of my favorite shows. It's called Decisions Are Made By Those That Show Up. The student body has showed up. So now we ask you to let us help you make decisions because at the end of the day, this is affecting our mental health and our stress levels. Thank you.
Maya, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, um, so I'm just gonna echo a little bit about what Yash was saying. It's so hard to truly create a schedule that accommodates students who would like more time and students who feel as though more time would wreck their mental health as well as their schedules. So in our, when we were making our survey, we wanted to include questions that would help guide us in a way like to answer some of these issues that students are having with their mental health and their scheduling. We, we ask questions, like asking about whether, what activities they've enjoyed this year that have made them feel more engaged and truly felt like they've gotten something out of it. And all these all the comments that we've received back have had a common thread of including student conversations with one another. A lot of these, I'll mention, it was Paradek. I heard a lot of Kahoot. Also, a lot of students were discussing group projects, hands-on activities, breakout rooms. And I want to add that many students discussed peer group as one of their favorite parts about the school year. So shortening the time of peer group would be detrimental to those that said that it's what they look forward to in the week. I know it's what I look forward to. So I don't want to see the time shortened between my group and I. But all the, what we've been receiving back is just the tip of the iceberg as Yash and I have not looked, uh, gotten a more depth present analysis over the results because it's not closed yet and we haven't received the entire student body's response yet, or most of the student bodies respond to, roughly half or a little bit more. So we're waiting on great, uh, creating a report and the survey's not closed. So if you haven't done the survey yet, we'd really like if you could complete that. I think it's posted on all the class pages for all the students watching this. I also just didn't expect so many students to come out and truly show their support for or truly voice their opinion and what's occurring right now with their schedule changes. I know it affects all of us. And I also want to call attention to all the teachers that have been doing such a great job adjusting and adapting to all these schedule changes and really like they're going through the same difficulties as the students are with the inconsistency of the schedule. So I just want to really give a shout out to them. And also another shout out just to all the students once again for coming here and showing your voice, like you guys will be heard and we're definitely going to work on creating more outlets for students to truly voice their opinions and especially during this time that's so hard for all of us. It's really important to make sure that all of our mental health is being kept in check. And I think that about covers everything.
Thank you, Maya. I'll just say that I think that the board would be very eager to see your survey when you've, when you've finished it. You've spoken about it now. I think you spoke about it last month as well. And you know, we haven't seen anything from it yet and we're eager to see that. So when you're ready to share, you know, we're, we're ready to, to, to hear what, what you have to say, what you find out from your colleagues. So we appreciate that. Does anyone have, want to make any comments at this point? The board or Dr. Glossa?
No, it's fine. Thank you.
Okay. We are now on to the part of our meeting that is our public forum. We have these, this time in every one of our meetings. It is a time for the public to speak to us. It is not a Q and A period. We are not able to answer questions. We want to hear from you. We will listen to what you have to say. I know there's a lot of questions, which is why we continue to ask, you know, to Dr. Gloss, who has indicated questions should go to specific principals of the high school. But we do want to hear from you all tonight. We ask that when you speak, you give your name and your address. And that you, I think tonight we still have, how many people on here? We have eight hundred and thirty-six people on this call. So in order to keep it somewhat within the realm of, of the, the meeting. And by the way, we still have to do the whole meeting of the month with all the monthly district business. So there's a lot on the agenda. Normally we have fifteen minutes. I think we, we may expand that to maybe if we needed an hour tonight. And we ask that people keep their comments to two minutes if possible, just out of respect for all the people that may want to speak to us. So with that, Mr. Bolden, would you want to?
Yes.
Look for people with their hands.
And before, before we get started, I'm Michelle Tuck Ponder and I'm the timekeeper. And we want to hear as many people as possible speak tonight. So if you would be so kind to be brief in your remarks, to the point, and if someone has made a point already, it would be great if you could either put your question in the chat or remark in the chat so that it gets recorded. But we're really trying very hard to hear as many people as we can. And if you go over, I am going to ask you to stop talking. So just wanted to give you the, a heads up on that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I, can I just make one note as well? There is a, there is a magic email address that goes to all of us on the board. I don't know if that's something you mentioned, Beth, but we can put that in the chat. So if anyone is more comfortable rather than speaking in public and would like to email their comments to us, we read everyone. So we can put that email in the chat.
Thank you, Betsy. Anything else? Good.
Jason Rogart, you are up. Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Jason Rogart. I'm Marion Road East. By way of background, I'm a physician. And I've been taking care of COVID patients throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I'm intimately familiar with the seriousness of this disease. I'm also a citizen of Princeton and a father of two children in the public schools. I've reviewed the outline changes in today's email in this meeting and sadly, they are woefully inadequate and frankly insulting. To say that I am deeply disappointed with the district's handling of our children's education over the past year would be a huge understatement. It is my opinion and the opinion of many other parents that the district has failed us. It has failed our children. It has failed working parents and it has failed teachers who wish to teach in-person full-time. The district should be embarrassed and ashamed of itself for the harm it has inflicted upon our children. We know that COVID nineteen itself poses little risk to children. We also know that denying children the opportunity for in-person education is stunting their academic and social development, has forced them to endure hours of unhealthy screen time, has prematurely exposed them to the dangers of social media, and has led to increased incidences of depression and suicide. These negative effects far outweigh the exaggerated risk of COVID nineteen to children. Think about this. In September, the district has limited our children's opportunity for in-person school to less than twenty-five percent of the normal time. Furthermore, there are so many inconsistencies in the type of education PPS students are receiving across schools and even within grades, that it is mind-boggling. As a result, nearly one hundred fifty students have chosen to leave our school district for private school. Many others have hired private teachers and make up for the gaps in education this year. Most families, however, do not have the financial resources for private school or private tutors. It is very unfortunate that the district has allowed these inequities to worsen. I do want to point out that I am very grateful to our wonderful teachers. They are doing the best they can. The teachers I have spoken with are frustrated with the hybrid system and wish to go back to full-time in-person teaching, but their voices are not being heard by the district. As we see more and more school districts in our area return to full-time in-person education this winter and spring, it is deeply disappointing that Princeton has lacked the fortitude and creativity to fully reopen as well. Many people have returned to work, organizations like Princeton YMCA and Princeton Rec Department.
We'd like to have as many people speak as possible. If you could wrap up your comments, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. Finally, I would just like to say to the like-minded, like-minded parents out there listening, please make your voices heard. To deny us our choice to have our kids in school full-time is unethical by the district. Let us decide what risks to take, what is best for our children. And to the board and to PPS administrators, I am asking you to get your, our children back to school full-time before April first. COVID nineteen is not going away.
Dr. Rogert, thank you for your comments this evening. It's only fair that we can let as many people as possible talk. Thank you for sharing your ideas.
Thank you. Anna Stamborsky?
Hi there. I'm Anna Stamborsky. I'm a Princeton Seminary student. So I live two oh one LaShure Place at our Princeton Seminary housing. I'm formerly a middle school bilingual science teacher and I support with Princeton Mutual Aid and their translation services. For me, I have a very simple request. I would love to see the school district have their application materials translated into at least Spanish. I know we've had a request for Haitian Creole. I spent six hours supporting a neighbor do her applications to become a floor custodian. It took us six hours to translate. And I think this is something that could easily be mitigated by having it translated into Spanish, especially as a school that prides itself, as we saw tonight, on racial literacy and equitable access. I really think that we need to make this accessible to folks who are non-native English speakers, especially who are wanting to engage in work for the school district. And so I think this is a really easy win for folks to be able to get this material translated into Spanish as well as other languages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate Howard?
Thank you for calling on me. I'd like to thank members of the board for their time this evening, members of the PHS administration for their time yesterday when we talked about them with our concerns about the schedule. I appreciate that they seem to have listened to us. We told them that the seventy-five minute class periods would be too long and they have changed that. They have now added a ninth period at the end of the day, which doesn't address the concern that this is still too much time online and in school. I agree with what Yash said earlier. There has been confusion about the entirety of this process. Students have had no input in this decision-making and our mental health has not been considered. I'd like to reiterate that the COVID pandemic has been especially hard for students who are missing a lot of their formative opportunities in, during high school. And having more stressful school is not going to help us. Now, I also want to say that I appreciate the board's decision to allow for extra time for public comment. But I would like to also add that students, along with myself, feel that the way that this meeting has been scheduled was a way to filibuster and dissuade students from saying, we had to wait almost two hours to begin public comment. It took over an hour to hear about the PHS plan in and of itself. So I think that, you know, I understand there's a lot to talk about, but I know that many of us felt that this was a way of stalling. I don't know if that was the intention, but that is how we felt. And finally, I'd just like to reiterate that having a period at the end of the day will be very confusing. I think that when we say that we want a consistent schedule, that means no changes and this kind of change is not helpful. You know, it's important that the school day ends and changing that time will be confusing for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nate? Jen Bigioni?
Hello, I'm Jen Bigioni, a twenty-seven-year PHS educator and PPS parent of one twenty-nineteen graduate and one fully-removed senior. Over the last three weeks, PHS faculty, staff and administration diligently and collaboratively put together a database plan addressing the needs of our most needy students. We worked from the best available data, not assumptions about what would benefit those particular students. We proposed a number of concrete actions we collectively believed would address our most pressing concerns. It is clear that some students get the most benefit through in-person instruction. We collectively proposed to increase our de-cohort by safely increasing class size to accommodate some of our most vulnerable students. We proposed tangible changes to our targeted instruction practices, like those mentioned by Dr. Galazzo and described by Mr. Warren. We have proposed implementing tweaks to make Canvas more accessible. For those students who have fallen behind where we'd like them to be, we proposed several learning recovery options. We want to better identify students who may need additional assistance and reach out to them and to their families and guardians more directly. We have been continuing to identify issues and possible solutions. We will always look to the data first. We won't shy away from the problem nor the work that we will have to take to address it. We have worked together and we want to continue working together to figure out how to best help our kids. Unfortunately, we have been stopped in our tracks from implementing most of this data-driven plan. We also knew from previous meetings with students and polls they conducted and polls of faculty that every change you made produced stress, which is already in abundance this year. We also know that they asked for consistency. Lastly, many pleaded for the asynchronous afternoon time to expand, not contract, as we tightened targeted instruction. We plan necessary changes with these things in mind. It is not the schedule you saw here tonight. Thankfully, it's also not the seventy-five minute period, no targeted instruction schedule that we had been told to institute. We have one thousand seventy-two of our students in cohort C. Some are there because they have to watch siblings. Some are there because they live in multi-generational households. Some are there because they have been devastated by COVID. Some are there because they just don't think it's safe for a teenager to be in the building until they are vaccinated. When approximately twelve hundred of your fifteen hundred and fifty students are at remote locations on any given day for absolutely valid reasons, we have to target instruction that addresses their needs as well. We connect via Zoom.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up your comments, please. We're trying to let as many people talk as possible this evening.
We, we connect via Zoom. We develop asynchronous parts of our lessons and we have targeted instruction time. One teacher wrote to me about how she holds two hours every single day to help both their educational and social emotional needs. The schedule collectively proposed by PSS administrators, faculty and staff was created to address the academic and emotional needs of all of our students, but especially the most vulnerable. When we realize that something
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up now. And thank you for sharing.
For the time to implement our actual schedule. Thank you.
Jen? Malachi Wood?
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Malachi Wood. I'm a teacher at the high school. I have a parent of two children at PUMS, resident of town and an alumnus of the entire district. Wanted to talk today, um, first of all, want to echo what Yash said, last forty-eight hours have been confusing. We've seen different iterations of the schedule in the last few days. And I think that's why today's attendance is close to a thousand. My comments were written to address a different version, but it still needs to be said and considered. It did not look like everybody had input, so it's wonderful to see that the stakeholders will finally have a voice and that there will be collaboration. This is the way. The extended schedule will be an equity disaster. Going forward with this will extend the equity gap that already exists at PHS. The more time students spend in class, the more time they need outside of class to do the inevitably increased workload. This is doubly true for our vulnerable and challenged students. These students are often lost in large virtual class and more so in hybrid. Extending the class time does not fix the problem, it exacerbates it. Further, a substantial number of vulnerable and challenged students are taking care of siblings and family during the day and even during classes. This is not a choice for them. It's a matter of economic survival for their family. The extended schedule does not respect this, that this is happening. The extended schedule will replace time available for targeted one-on-one instruction vulnerable students can receive now. Within class time, that, as we already explained, does not fix the problem. Vulnerable and challenged students need more time for individual support. This is consistent with experiences this year. Small group and one-on-one sessions are critical to student success and even academic survival. The extended schedule takes away time in the afternoon and particularly on Fridays when students meet with teachers. While more privileged students are able to get help from parents, tutors and online resources, our most vulnerable students literally do not have access to this type of help. They rely almost exclusively on their teachers. These students do not have parents who can tutor them, whether for lack of time or education. They do not have the money to pay for tutors. Initial access remains a challenge for them. The extended schedule takes away the teacher's afternoon time that is available to be one-on-one with their most vulnerable students. We must realize that a substantial, we must realize that a substantial number of vulnerable and challenged students are working after school, often full-time jobs is not a choice for them.
Mr. Wood? If you could, first of all, what you're saying is really important and, and you know, I appreciate that. We'd love to see that in writing, but again, we want to hear as many, from as many people as possible. If you could wrap up your comments, I'd really appreciate it, but please send us your comments in writing.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll wrap it up. So it's not a choice for them. It's a pandemic. Jobs were lost, rent is owed. And many students have caretaking responsibilities. The goal should be to do what is best for as many students as possible. We must never forget that first and foremost, we must do no harm, especially to our most vulnerable students. And the proposed extended schedule will cause harm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Janelle Wilkinson.
Hello, my name is Janelle Wilkinson and I have been a teacher of French and dance at Princeton High School for the last twenty-five years. I have two teenagers, one who just graduated from PHS last year. I'd like to talk to you about Zoom fatigue. We know that the kids are suffering. We are all suffering. We are in the midst of a global pandemic. We are all on screens all throughout the day. If you are unaware in the high school, when students are in the classroom, those classroom students still spend the entire class period on Zoom. We teachers have to have the documents available, partner the students up with students at home and need to explain work on campus. Students are on Zoom the entire day and now you're asking them to stay on the computer and Zoom even longer. I won't address adolescent screen time and depression, but I am going to address Zoom fatigue as it relates to health and wellness. At Princeton Public Schools, we have a strategic goal and initiative for health and wellness of the students. These objectives are clearly stated on the school website. Being on Zoom for PHS students, six, seven, eight or more hours for school is exhausting. Zoom fatigue is real and we know it. Because we have almost not no non-verbal cues with Zoom calls. Zoom student needs to focus all attention on the words spoken by the teachers and peers. Add to that the millisecond delays and verbal responses on Zoom. Which negatively affect our interpersonal perceptions even without any internet or technical issues. And that gallery Zoom view we have, this magnifies the problem. With twenty-five quarter-sized images in front of you, subtle facial cues are impossible to interpret. All of this contributes to Zoom fatigue. And now you want to keep the kids on Zoom even longer. That means you're keeping them from, keeping them sitting even more hours every day. We know that physical activity is beneficial in countless ways. More work and more hours sitting in front of the screen is exactly the opposite of what these teenagers need during a pandemic. The health and wellness of our students is the utmost importance to our district. As this is our district objective and strategic goal. A healthy school life balance, getting them off the screen is more important than ever during this pandemic.
Miss Wilkinson, if you could wrap your comments up, please.
Yep. Increasing screen time does not meet this goal. It directly conflicts with it. Allow our kids to get out and get off of their screens. Thank you.
Miss Wilkinson, if you could also submit those comments in writing, I think we'd appreciate seeing them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eighty-two, three, one, seven, two, seven, nine, eight, five. Okay, going, there you go. Nope. Raphael Dance, Dance, Danceager, butcher in their name, and I'm usually good. Rafaela.
Hello. Yes, I'm Rafaela Danceiger and I have two kids in the elementary school. I'm urging the board to immediately take measures that allow for reduced distancing between children. Thereby allowing for return to five days a week in-person learning for all classes. Based on the new plan proposed tonight, the only guarantee that we have at the elementary level is two extra half-days every other week. That's eight hours a month. The district has chosen restrictive standards that are not in fact required by the governor relating to social distancing. And this self-imposed restrictiveness has caused severe harm to our children. We have been told that our kids can't be brought back fully because this would violate the governor's six-feet rule. This is a specious argument. The governor does not require six-feet distancing. The guidelines specifically state, quote. If schools are not able to maintain a distance of six feet, additional modifications should be considered. These include physical barriers between desks and desks and turning desks to face the same direction. Or having students sit only on one side of the table and spaced apart. When social distancing is difficult or impossible, face coverings are required, unquote. Likewise, we've been told many times that the district can provide busing if we move to regular instruction given distance requirements. But the governor's guidelines on transportation state, quote. Districts should maintain social distancing practices bus on buses to the maximum extent practicable. If maintaining distancing is not possible, all students who are able must wear face coverings while on buses. These have been the guidelines since June. Why has the district not installed Plexiglas or other barriers? And why are we being told that busing is a problem? This inaction is simply unacceptable and frankly unconscionable. Given the severe developmental harms that these unnecessarily restrictive measures have caused. Almost, after almost a year of barely any in-person schooling, parents are seeing their children change before their eyes. And we are outraged and heartbroken. Second graders are showing signs of depression. The other day, my nine-year-old daughter, who's generally a happy kid, could not stop crying. She eventually told me that ever since school closed, she's been forced to sit in front of the computer and her life just isn't fun anymore. This isn't just one personal story. Research on the mental health effects of school closures backs it up. Let me be clear. The board and school administration is causing potentially irreparable, irreparable damage to our children. Because they choose to enforce rules that are not required. The known and actual harm that the current policies have already caused must surely outweigh the potential cost of a handful of positive covid cases. Especially as more and more adults get vaccinated. I urge the board to immediately depart from their self-imposed six-feet mandate and to finally start taking the mental and emotional health of our children into account.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Taylor.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Taylor. I teach AP US History and Sociology Accelerated at PHS. And I'm proud to see so many current and former students in attendance tonight. In addition to the other concerns raised tonight, I'd like to address how extending the school day at PHS will impact. Professional development and opportunities for collaboration. One of the things that stands out to me about this year is how disconnected. I feel for my colleagues. Even when we were in person, I rarely see them. As a result, I often feel like I'm working in a vacuum. That I'm isolated from my colleagues and from important district initiatives. However, the Humanities Department has found two ways to effectively use our current schedule. To help me feel some connection and to enable our department to make meaningful, necessary change even in the midst of a pandemic. First, we have our weekly collaboration time in which teachers of the same class meet on Zoom to discuss the course and how things are going. We use this time to to share struggles, provide support and suggestions. Try to decipher the most recent change announced by the College Board. Brainstorm ways to make technology work for us and overall find ways to provide the most meaningful instruction possible. In one meeting in January, we hosted a humanities tech showcase in which teachers had an opportunity to share particular technology. They've successfully implemented this year. Currently, these meetings take place on Tuesday and Wednesday afternoons. The only days on which humanities teachers don't already have scheduled targeted instruction time or faculty meetings. In addition, Stephanie Greenberg, supervisor of the Humanities Department, has found ways for all of us to continue our work to provide a more equitable. And diverse curriculum for our students. First, in the fall, she scheduled several sessions with Jenna Chandler Ward to help us develop a shared vision for our equity work. More recently, she formed a humanities teachers advisory group consisting of five representatives of the department. We need to discuss our equity plan and any other departmental matters that come up. We've met three times so far and I already feel much more connected to my colleagues. And to the vitally important equity work of the district. The biggest struggle we've had so far is finding time to meet because even with the shortened day that we currently have. We each have so many meetings in the afternoon that it has been challenging to find a time that works. Both the collaboration time and the humanities advisory group provide vital professional development. As well as collaboration that is more necessary now than it has ever been in my nineteen years as a teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up at this point.
When I looked at the proposed schedule that included a longer school day, my first thought was that there is no space for these meetings to continue. This is going to hurt students. I asked the school board to consider how extending the school day will negatively impact and disrupt. The ongoing professional development endeavors of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugenia Perrello Mana, Mana. Eugenia. Eugenia. Robert Reeve.
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Reeve. I'm a middle school teacher for the band at Princeton Unified Middle School. And I wanted to share a little bit about. Our current situation with the current schedule and how the new schedule could affect our programs. As you know, hearing from the presentation earlier from our supervisor, Mr. Lenahan. We are currently doing virtual school lessons because we cannot play in the building yet due to the current protocols. So as at this time, the students that are remote are playing from their homes and we are teaching from our homes. And that's giving us a good situation. However, if the students that are attending school in person, they are coming back on. After the school day ends, their their morning half of the day and coming back on for lessons with us from one thirty to three o'clock. So that they are able to learn, perform and practice their instrument with direct instruction modeling from us and feedback from us as well. So therefore, when they're in school Monday through Thursday, they sign back on during that time that we have available. Soon to include the Fridays with the schedule change. So we are teaching from one thirty to three o'clock so that those students do not fall behind in their peers. While this current one thirty to three schedule results in students having a shorter thirty-minute active playing period than they would have. Requiring those students to then check in with other teachers or being pulled from our classes to go work in other classes. Would receive, would allow those students and only further cut into their instructional time. So they won't able to be able to receive a full class performance-based class period only on the every other week. We've brought this up a few times and there's just not much time to to fit into our schedule as it is now. So having that one thirty to three o'clock time for those students is the only way that we've been able to make this work. Also, because we teach during that time, we don't have the opportunity to always touch base with some of the other students that may be having. You know, difficulties in their learning, could be having technical difficulties with either software or the technology that we're having. We only have about an hour during the week to meet with those other students if we don't have a rehearsal during that time period.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. We, could you please wrap up your comments? We've got forty-four people who want to talk and we're gonna try to hear from all of them.
Okay. Under the current guidance, we're only allowed to play for that time. So if we're forced to extend the schedule longer. Those students are gonna be losing additional time, which has already been shortened with the current schedule. Further impacting our program and the participation of our students.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Xiaobing Li. Xiaobing, are you there? Paula Jackaloo.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Paula Jackaloo. I'm a teacher of science biology at Princeton High School for over twenty-five years. Most of the proud parent of two PHS grads. Thank you for listening to my concerns. The past several decades, I've witnessed this district face difficult situation after difficult situation. Be it budget cuts, contract talks, issues with gangs and substance abuse. However, I've never quite seen what we are in the midst of now and how painfully apparent it is that this plan demonstrates. That our input as experienced professionals and our safety of our families and loved ones are not valued. Imagine having to conduct a board meeting as I would conduct my classes in fashion. In this room, the board members would have to separate themselves six feet apart with a portion of the audience present as well to conduct their Zoom session. On an evening such as this one, the capacity would be at or over its limit. So the folding divider of the Board of Education room would be open and I'm assuming we could fit about thirty-five to forty people in the room. Covid-style, of course. Next, please do as I would under similar obligations and conditions. Complete your covid survey before upon arrival to Valley Road. If you're vaccinated, hope for the best. Arrive at no later than seven PM. Double mask. Leave this at two AM in the morning to fulfill your six-hour obligation. And have time for lunch throughout our likely to time. Mar, not next month as you do now and forego any lunch. Repeat this presentation this evening four times, not just once. Perhaps having to shift to another classroom as many teachers do. Set up the tech yourself each time. No calling in a tech crew. Take attendance using eleven different attendance codes each and for Tom. Maintain and revise four seating depending upon student attendance. Actively deliver information, concepts, encourage creativity and critical thinking. Respond and troubleshoot questions and concerns from people in the room and people online all at the same time. Through a double mask and Plexiglas. Repeat phases, phrases and ask others to repeat what they say when you can't hear each other properly. Especially in the back of the board meeting room at Valley Road.
Please wrap up your comments because we've got a lot of people who want to speak and what you're saying is great.
I timed it for two minutes.
Yeah, it's, you're over.
Signs of abuse and medical issues. So you get the idea. Then they're using the bathroom if you're lucky. So if you can understand what we go through, if anyone at Valley Road observed our high school teachers doing their amazing work. Let alone trying to teach hybrid, there's simply no way that they ever would have proposed such an inhumane and ridiculous schedule as this one. To put it simply, this plan lays bare what I've long witnessed through my years.
I'm really trying to be as polite as I can. We have so many people who want to speak. Thank you so much for your comments.
Jane Ricciardi.
Hi, my name is Jane Ricciardi. I teach AP Biology and Genetics at Princeton High School. And I'm a mother of two boys at Riverside. As a parent, I have been impressed with the education my boys have received this year despite the challenges of the pandemic. As a teacher, I know the positive experiences my boys are having are due to the countless hours of planning by their teachers. One concern I have with the proposed schedules is the lack of preparation time for teachers. Teaching during the pandemic is unlike anything we've ever experienced. Very few of our materials can be used in the same way. We're developing synchronous lessons for students both in the classroom and on Zoom to promote equitable learning experiences between cohorts. We're creating video lectures, interactive notebooks and digital labs for our Canvas pages. Each of these resources takes hours to create and can take additional hours to grade. I'm happy to invite any of you board members to come look at the resources that I've created this year. In a professional development workshop earlier this year, we were told creating a digital classroom takes three years to thoughtfully and thoroughly develop. You're asking us to do it in one year, all while learning how to use new digital tools. I go above and beyond for my students and I'm happy to do it because it enriches my students' high school experience. But this year I've reached my limit and I know I'm not alone. I don't know how I can physically work harder than I am. The proposed schedule greatly reduces the one-on-one time we have with students for extra help. And the time we have to collaborate with our colleagues. It is asking teachers to do more with less. When we have no more time left to give, our students are going to suffer. They will mean students won't get timely feedback. It means teachers won't have time to share best practices. That create differentiated and creative instruction needs. Trade of instruction needed to keep our students engaged and succeeding. It means teachers are going to have to cut out all the extras we do for your children in our spare time. Like writing letters of recommendation or providing extra help and AP review sessions. We love what we do and we want to provide all Princeton Public School students with the best learning experience we can. But we need time to prepare for it.
Thank you, Ms. Riccardi.
Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Elise Bernstein Corn. Well, Elise.
Yeah, hi there. This is actually Michael, Elise's husband.
Yeah, hi there. This is actually Michael, Elise's husband and the our son's Marcus graduated PHS and Zachary's a senior. Couple things, I'm impressed with the teachers who have spoken here today. You know, thank you. We we realize just how hard you work. And and in spite of the criticism of the board, I want to say thank you because I know you're trying to strike the balance and you've been conscientious and working really hard to get our students back to school.
Go ahead. I think one of the biggest points is that everyone, we understand that everyone is really trying their hardest to make this work. It's been a very challenging year. But I think that once this is over, we're going to be able to look back and be very proud and feel very positively about all the steps that have been taken. But the biggest point really is that it has been such a year of change. And of our student, our son in particular, who is a senior, it's like he feels like he's just gotten into a rhythm and every time that it's like we finally got this going and now it's being changed. So the biggest point is that there is a rhythm that has been established. And I think that students and students, parents and definitely teachers are saying, please just stop, let everybody move with the schedule that they have been on and stop changing it because every single time it gets changed, even if there is a positive reason to do it. There is so much energy that is put into the change. Just stick with what you have. It makes it easier for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise.
Thank you. Oliver Wang.
Oops, sorry.
I'm not Oliver, but I got asked in mute, so I did. My name is Livia Boling. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. And I just find it infuriating how you guys pretend to care about our mental health and then turn around and implement policies that just just don't give any care to what we are saying and what our mental health is like, like for turning on cameras. Literally just all these schedule changes. It's I thought you guys were supposed to care about our mental health and you turn around and do this and it just it's making me and so many other students just so mad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oliver Wang.
Yes, hi. Um, I'm a student at PHS and I would like to congratulate the board for being more tone deaf than Ted Cruz in a Texas winter storm. I am not surprised at all that this entire thing has been pulled off. I mean, at the beginning of this, we had a filibuster. When you tried to stall and try to kick us all out, I don't know if it seems like it, but I don't know if you meant it, but it kind of seems like it. And this has been a pattern for a lot of the board for years for this entire year. First, you tried to get rid of Fridays and we tried to petition you and tried to tell you hi, we have some problems, can we fix it? And you ignored us. And then you do this again when you forced everyone to turn their cameras on and then you ignored teachers' concerns multiple times. And you just kind of lied to us this time and just tried to be as suspicious as possible and ignored the student voice. And I'm sick and tired of this entire board and every single member of the administration sending we're all in this together emails because it's pretty clear that much of the school board is very privileged and is very rich. And some of you have sent your kids never into the public school system and most of you don't actually understand what it's like. Some of you have never had students in there and most of you are all parents. So you've never actually understood what it's like to be a student during these times when we're actually struggling and we're struggling to get our voices heard. And it's kind of infuriating that you've essentially pushed out a schedule without any of our input, without any of what we wanted to know. So I'm just going to end this off by saying stop being Ted Cruz during a winter storm and actually listen to the voice of what is essentially your constituents, your students.
Thank you, Oliver.
Rebecca B.
Hi, so I'm Rebecca Ball again. I live at 277 Snowden Lane and I am the parent of a high schooler. So I'd like to begin by, you know, congratulating the board on their successful search for a new superintendent. Dr. Kelly comes with great credentials and I'm excited to see how she'll impact our children's education. Along with that, I want to give a shout out to all our teachers in the district for their dedication and their hard work. I've noticed a remarkable improvement on online teaching in comparison to last year. This includes teachers' use of technology and executing and execution of their lesson plans. My son is definitely more engaged and he's benefiting from these improvements. One positive aspect that I've noticed of this online learning is that parents get to see, get a sneak peek of what's actually occurring in the class. And you know, we really do have amazing teachers. They're flexible and they're innovative. They make themselves available throughout the day. Some of them even hold evening office hours to help accommodate students' schedules. I noticed the counselors are engaging students in small groups and they're helping time management. Helping with time management and also their social emotional leads. And last but not least, I have to say thank you to the nurses. Thank you for your flexibility and your willingness to accommodate the needs of our children. I know it's not easy and teachers' office hours have been a godsend. They have been a way for students to get clarification and get extra help. That being said, listening to these presentations today, I have a couple of concerns. I'm concerned that longer days for students won't produce healthier students. I don't know what the reasoning behind that is. I'm concerned that athletes and challenged students won't have adequate opportunities to attend these office hours and asynchronous learning sessions. And I also have a question regarding the sports, particularly spring sports. We were told that spring sports would not start before winter sports ended. And according to the timeline, I'm seeing that there's a short lapse in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Rebecca Kraus.
Um, hello, my name is Rebecca Kraus. I'm a senior at Princeton High School. And I know I don't want to like completely echo everything everyone else has been saying. So I just want everyone, first of all, to think about how we've been sitting on the Zoom for two and a half hours. It's safe to say everybody looks tired. And just imagine doing that for four hours longer. If we're doing that for six or seven hours every single day, there is like that will take such a toll on every single student's mental health and every single student has been shouting from the rooftops to not go forward with it. We've also heard from plenty of teachers who agree. And I just want you to think if you continue to go forward with these plans, who are you doing it for? It's obviously not the students. It's obviously not the teachers. The only other option is yourselves and that's frankly despicable. So I really hope you reconsider.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Orin Levi.
Yeah, sorry. That's a hard act to follow. Hello, Seem Board Member, Board and Administrators. My name is Orin Levy and I am a science teacher at PHS. I'd like to address just one of the issues regarding the new increased instruction schedule being proposed. Specifically, the idea that eating outside in tents is a safe, good choice. Just looking at the CDC guidelines on their website, we already see issues with the plans. The stance of the CDC has always been that masking and social distancing is the best way to keep people safe. By nature, you are now eliminating one of these safeguards by allowing students to remove masks to eat. The other issue, the issue is also that students at the school do not social distance. No matter how many times you tell them to leave room or break it up, if there's not someone monitoring them the entire time, they will attract back to each other to show their friends a funny video or text that they got. I've seen it during my cafeteria duty. I've seen it during my hall duty. I've and I've seen at the school every day. Even the guidelines for restaurants and bars recommend emphasizing takeout and delivery over outdoor dining. Yes, ventilation helps, but it is still an increased risk of airborne transmission. We should be taking steps to reduce risk, not introducing plans that will increase it even a little. We are doing such a good job of keeping the numbers down in Princeton. Why are we now taking steps backwards? And this doesn't even include any number of unforeseen complications with this plan, like whether rogue students joining their friends not in school and likely many more. Not to mention with the desire to increase the attendance in school, which is really the important part and start combining cohorts, you now have what could be few hundred students congregating under a tent, all unmasked, all talking and hanging out with their friends they haven't seen in months. Yes, it sounds exciting. But as someone who has been reading the science, it also sounds like a super spreader event. Please take this into consideration for the safety of our students and teachers. I'd like for the record to show also that that this is coming from a place of concern for the students and teachers, not because I am uncomfortable quote unquote, teaching in the school. By the time this plan will be implemented, I will have been fully vaccinated for a month. And even so, I worry for the students and my colleagues that are still struggling to get their first vaccine. I hope you will make the right choice. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Levi.
Ellen Rose.
Hi, I'm Helen Rose. I'm one of the pediatricians in town and I have four kids in the public schools. I'm on Linden Lane. And so I have a child at CP at Palms. I have two kids at the high school. I'm really concerned because the quality of education right now, I really feel like it's it's poor. I feel like in person, the kids are mostly looking at the screens. I'm hearing that from students and from my own kids. I feel like a lot of the middle school and high school students change to remote because school is no better than being at home. And it's not really a desire to be remote and then they become remote and they feel isolated and get more depressed. I'm really concerned about that. And also I'm concerned I don't want more computer instruction. I want more in-person instruction. And you know, the community period from 2 to 3:10 sounds like more time in front of the screens. Also, I want everybody to remember that in January, the CDC came out saying that although there's some risk at school, the risk is very reasonable, very small. And in many ways, the risk is lower than the community risk. So I feel like if we keep chasing zero risk and we keep trying to decrease our risk, then we increase our risk with with other things like we increase the amount of depression and there's a certain percentage of suicides with depression and things like that that I'm really worried about. I'm seeing so many kids that are anxious and depressed more and more every single week. And they're feeling more and more isolated. I think we need to look forward and acknowledge that remote learning and remote activities are not equivalent to in-person. We should do in-person activities. We should mitigate the risk. But we cannot expect no risk because there's a lot of value to in-person activity and the kids are suffering without it.
Thank you, Helen.
Okay, can I say one last thing as we
One last thing.
One last thing. As we move forward, I really feel like we're not putting the horse before the cart. You know, when you look at all the colleges, it depends on how we approach this. If we say we're going to provide an amazing education for our kids that promotes good mental health and first, and then we do what we need to do to accomplish those goals. Instead of saying, let's be as low risk as possible and then everything behind it. I think we can do it. If you look at what the different colleges, some have done it so much better than others.
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Robert Christopher.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for joining on today. It was, it's been a long one. I actually am a Cranberry resident. I'm on Maplewood Avenue in Cranberry. I wear multiple hats in this equation. I'm I'm actually a school board member. I'm speaking as a as an individual person in this discussion. I do not represent the Cranberry School Board of Ed in any way. My wife is an educator and I have two daughters in in PHS who are both sophomores. I'm looking at this from a couple of lenses. First, I think transportation certainly is is an issue from from Cranberry here. I just want to you know, certainly this is not a Q and A. I just want to make sure that we're we're looking at transportation for the Cranberry contingent. What when making these these scheduled schedule changes. So that's number one, I'll I'll double down on Mr. Levi's lunch questions. I think that's certainly a relatively big risk in this discussion. And currently, right, the logistics that you guys have worked out with this scheduling work well with 1,100 or so of your students in cohort C. Where's the threshold where these students are going to have to undertake yet another change in schedule? Is it? 1,000, is it 900? Is it when that cohort C starts to shrink because people think they can get more out of an in-person experience? Are we already looking at two changes of the schedule? Are we going to have a third one come May or June? Because I do think that these constant and somebody else had mentioned this already, the constant schedule changes is a bit tough to swallow for these kids. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Weiss.
Hi, thank you. This is Carol Weiss. I live on 35 Sheedy Brook. I'm the parent of a second grader at Little Brook. I appreciate the plan shared today to increase in-person instruction in elementary schools, but it is frankly too little, too late. Jason, who commented first, described the harms to kids well, which sums up my son's situation in a nutshell. And Raffaela, who spoke earlier to that, as well as the blind adherence to the six feet rule, which is correct, it's not actually a rule and for which there is some evidence that it's no more effective for elementary kids than three feet of distance. She addressed another important issue in the interest of time. I won't go into those points further. But I would like to say that my kid is not all right. None of the elementary kids are all right and none of us know yet what it will take to undo the damage. I would like to remind you, 8:30 to 12:30, even at five days a week, is still far from normal. I would like to see Princeton do the following for elementary schools. Accelerate the return to five days in person. So it begins no later than during the last half of March. And as soon as possible, extend the in-person half-day end time from 12:30 to 1 o'clock. Parents can certainly pack larger snacks and find a way to get back to full day instruction in spring. I find it ridiculous that there's a plan for the high school kids to lunch outdoors, but not the elementary kids. Waiting until mid-April to get back to five days is too long. Ending the day at 12:30 is too early. Other New Jersey school districts have had successful five-day models since September that follow a 1 o'clock dismissal schedule. Two examples are Chatham and Fairhaven. These districts have been providing K through five kids about three times as much in-person instruction as Princeton has. If the district does not act soon, we may have a lost generation. It will take years to uncover, never mind undo, the damage that school districts have caused by unnecessarily restructuring in-person K through five education. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sam Bonting.
Thank you for taking my comment, members of the board. I'd like to congratulate all the Princeton High School students who have spoken tonight. I'm really impressed at how articulate our local high schoolers are in advocating for their needs. And I'd also really like to thank the members of the board and the staff for all the work that you've done to try to get the schools reopened. I came on here tonight wanting to give you a hard time about the pace of reopening, but actually I've been really impressed at the efforts that are being made to get the schools back open. Nonetheless, I really do want to reiterate the thoughts of some of the previous speakers, including some of the doctors like Dr. Helen Rose, who have made the point that it is really imperative that we try to get back to full day schooling for our elementary school students as quickly as possible. I know that in the case of my daughter, who's a first grader at Community Park, it's been very difficult for her to be out of school. And I hope that you can be as flexible as possible within the parameters of the CDC recommendations to try to get students back in school on a full-time basis. And I think that a close reading of the CDC recommendations would indicate that there is some flexibility which is available. would indicate that there is some flexibility which is available beyond sticking to a strict six-foot distancing requirement and that it may be possible to group students within cohorts so that the six-foot distancing requirement may not be essential and that we might be able to get students back in class on a full-time basis with vaccinated teachers safely sooner rather than later. I thank you again for the efforts that you make. I think you seem to get it, the importance of making this happen as soon as possible. And again, I urge you to explore every possible opportunity for making that happen as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bunting.
Edward Erickson?
Hi, I'm Ned Erickson. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. This year, a common sentiment among students has been the feeling that the board and superintendent and superintendent have been our enemy. And this is something that I think we certainly don't want to feel, and I'm sure none of you want to feel it either. This is a time where we need to work together. But it's been hard to feel represented this year since students have never been consulted on any of the major decisions. We're simply slapped with these seemingly baseless edicts and given absolutely no chance to give our input. And while the administration at PHS has shown the student support, we need this attitude to be shared by the superintendent. At PHS, we're fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds. And we're fully capable of deciding what's best for us. The hundreds of students at this meeting ask to be treated as the young adults we are and consulted on these decisions going forward. Because after all, it's us who need to live under these rules. Also, it's been glaring how underappreciated the teachers are this year. They're the true heroes in this. When literally every student and every teacher at this meeting has explained that this policy, this new schedule change is bad, it should mean something. Our problem at the moment is that students and teachers are overworked. So the answer can't be to give us more work. This extra class time will only give us more stress, more stress in an already stressful time and at a school with already absurd levels of student stress. When making decisions, we need to ask ourselves whether we're acting because we can act or because we should act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yazan Mohammed?
All right. Thank you very much for the chance to speak. I will try to be brief. I just want to make it abundantly crystal clear that the proposed schedule, the overwhelming majority of students does not support it. We simply don't want it. And it's, I feel like it's very clear that it's not a good idea. A lot of students have jobs after school that they need to get to. Students are being overworked. Teachers are being overworked. And frankly, I will say that I'm a little heated because yesterday we had a long Zoom about the schedule before and how the idea of four seventy-five-minute class periods would not work for us. And I felt that a lot of students made that very clear. And the idea that, oh, instead, five sixty-minute class periods would be a better alternative, that feels a little disrespectful because that is essentially the same thing. I feel that a lot of students have made it clear that the issue is the quality of class time, more so than the quantity of class time. That the increase in the quantity of class time is not what they need. They need to feel like what they're learning is valuable. I would also just like to add, I do not think that returning to school is a good or safe idea in person on a large scale. COVID-19 is very dangerous. And it's been shown that a lot of the ways it affects people can vary in ways that are very frightening. So I, yeah, I'd just like to add that because I have heard some support of that and I'm personally not a fan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Dineen?
Yes. Hi, my name is Katie Dineen and I'm a social studies teacher at Princeton High School. And just thank you to everyone for hearing our comments tonight. I love working at Princeton Public Schools and I say this all the time because I feel so valued here. When my students follow up after class about things that we've learned or share memories from like years ago, when a colleague recommends a show or gifts books that they think I'd like, or when building administrators advocate on my behalf, the list goes on and on. I mean, even when people ask me about my dog. But I don't feel valued when I learn about changes that will significantly impact my work, my progress in my doctoral program, the care I provide for my loved ones, from my kids, from my students, I mean. And they're the reason I'm here now. I think it is really important that we take all of their needs into account when we're addressing scheduling issues at the high school, especially when it pertains to equity. I advise a bunch of student-run clubs like Model UN, Care, Cultural and Racial Equity Club, even oh, they have a podcast on Spotify and iTunes right now. You should check it out. Also, Robert Pattinson Appreciation Club, obviously. So I spend a lot of time afternoons, nights and weekends just listening to students and they have valid concerns, fears and ideas that I think we really need to hear in a meaningful way before decisions are made. Slade or Yezan, Ms. Corn, Mr. Wood, all spoke to the commitments that students have outside of school. You know, that they've been building for this entire academic year and a change, you know, so quickly and out of the blue presents a difficulty to a lot of them in really legitimate and valid ways. So just if there's a way to listen to them more meaningfully before this is either approved or voted on or acted on, I think that that would be appreciated by all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rin Ryan?
Hi, I'm a 10th grade student at PHS and someone, I forget who said this very well. It's not the quantity of the class time, it's the quality of the class time. And as I can imagine, you all are really tired from this Zoom. It's gone on forever and you're bored and you don't want to be here anymore. And imagine doing that four hours a day for five days a week. Humans are just naturally social creatures. We like interacting with each other and that's how we learn best. All human history is founded in civilizations and interpersonal connections. And with this, it feels like we're isolated and we can't learn because no one is here for us. And we want you to be here for us because we want you to hear our concerns. And our concern is this schedule is going to further divide us and keep us as individuals and prevent us from learning more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before we move on, I have a question because I think I had authority from my colleagues to go on for an hour. We're about in an hour. How many more people do we have lined up to speak?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Do we have agreement that we're going to continue?
Yes.
Yeah, everybody? Good? All right, let's go.
I'd like to, I'd like to just discuss that a little bit.
Okay.
All right.
So obviously want to hear from everybody, but to do so, we're talking about another ninety minutes of public comment. And so one question is whether that works for all the board members, many of whom have early starts to their day. Another is whether it works for the public that's here to comment. And I think either we can, we can move forward or we can consider, and I'm not advocating for this, I'm just saying we can consider doing what town council has done in the past when a topic has come up where there's been so much public interest is to agree to take no action on the change of plans and to notice and schedule a meeting for next week where we would have a very brief opening, go straight to public comment and make sure that as many people who want to talk get to talk and that they don't have to wait for other parts of the meeting to take place. So I just think we have two options to consider as we.
I think, I think it's very important that every student who has their hands up be given the opportunity to speak. And if we please move the students to the front of the line, I've asked that twice now so that the students can speak, so they don't feel like we're putting them off. And then after they speak, Brian, I'm willing to discuss, you know, other options.
Mr. Bolden, in the chat a while up, I sent a list of all the students that have raised their hands. I can resend that. I can restate those names. I can recognize most of the names. Like, any, any way will work.
I think you should resend it because it was a while ago.
Sounds good.
Would it be reasonable to to, you know, shorten the time from one minute and that would give, you know?
I, I think it's really difficult to communicate a cogent idea in a minute. And, and I also, you know, this is me. People have been sitting on this phone call for two hours. Sometimes it's, and they're anxious and they want to be heard. And yeah, we're going to be here late. It doesn't happen often. My opinion is that we should forge on until we've heard from everybody. That's one person.
Yep, I agree. But this is our, this is our job as board members.
It is. It is our job and our obligation.
I would ask that if there's certain administrators though, who aren't directly, Mr. Dubinsky and others, Mr. Lenahan, if they need, I don't know. I mean, do we want everyone to stay? They've all got, everyone's got to.
Well, I think it's important, Beth. I think they came up with these plans. They were cooperative and now that's the time, is the time to listen for feedback. Okay.
I, I will make one suggestion and I will ask our speakers. If someone has already made a point, reiterating it is, you know, briefly, be as brief as you can, but we want to hear from everybody. But be focused, be targeted and so we can get everybody's voice heard. Everybody good?
I've sent one list already.
Okay. And I want to hear from students, but you know, parents, their parents here who have little kids who can't speak. So, you know, I think that we should give everybody a chance to be.
Right. And there are some comments that have suggested that additional time is needed to consider the plan for each level, elementary, middle and high school separately. So I, I don't know how we optimize for this because either we're going to ask parents and staff and our fellow board members to, you know, be here probably well past midnight, or we say this is just something that takes more time and we're not going to limit anybody's ability to talk. We're going to create as much time as needed to make sure everyone is heard and that we, we encourage our administrators to reach out to parents and perhaps create other forums to get feedback. I just don't know that we can get it all done tonight as much as I believe that every single person who's made time to be here should have an opportunity to speak.
So why don't we just do a straw poll? Beth?
We can do a straw poll. I think, what is the consensus of the board? Shall we continue?
Raise your hand if you want to continue.
I'm not doing a straw poll because I'm unclear where we're going. Is this resulting in a vote or is, are we just listening to people? Listening.
We're listening.
Listening. And we have a whole business meeting after that.
Right. Thank you. I'm, I'm willing to consider future meetings. Certainly, I think we need more time to listen to more people. But I do think anyone who's on the call who wants to speak tonight, I think we need to let them speak. I want to hear them.
Okay, so in fairness to those people, would we agree that we will take no action on this matter tonight? And that anybody who wants to stay, we will absolutely stay and listen to them. But if there are our parents or students who would prefer to wait for another opportunity, that we will try to schedule a meeting next week to provide that opportunity where they would not need to be up till, you know, eleven thirty or midnight or 1:00 a.m.
Well, let me ask Dr. Galasso, are, was it your expectation that you would have a decision tonight?
You're muted, Barry.
I said there was no expectation of a vote tonight. The only thing tonight was a presentation of plans and to hear input, period.
So I do agree with Brian, my colleague, esteemed colleague, that, you know, the issues at the elementary schools and the high school and of course, in the middle school, really three different issues. And we should, you know, have appropriate forums, you know, for those issues, you know, and to mix them up together on one call, I think is challenging. And I know tomorrow night, there's a meeting of the middle school and we could schedule other meetings, you know, that start earlier and perhaps a more interactive. You know, I think what we're hearing from the students is not being heard. So we need some more interactive forums. And, and I think that we should schedule that before taking action. But we could combine the four elementary schools together, Palms, and then the high school separately. So three different forums. And I think making them interactive would really allow us to hear and interact with all of the families.
Well, can we, is there possibly a compromise? Because I do respect the fact that there are people who have persevered and want to be heard tonight. And that we will, we will stay and we will listen to anyone who wants to be heard tonight. But, but if there are just some people who cannot stay that long, that we will, one, create another opportunity and that, two, we will really think about how best to address what are three different, you know, plans that all obviously relate to one another, but have different characteristics.
I can just say for the high schoolers, a lot of them are very eager to speak. They don't, there are very few days, to be completely honest, they're here, it's ten thirty, they can continue to speak. And I think of the people that are being affected most, we're one of the group that's being affected the most. I think y'all should hear what they have to say because it is quite important.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees. Let's go ahead.
All right, going ahead?
Let's keep going.
All right, Matt, let's go. Thanks, Josh.
Why don't you just tell me who the kids are? Because it's really almost impossible for you.
All right. The next kid on your list is William Erickson.
Hello. Thank you for letting me talk. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. I'd like to say that's really nice. You're letting our voices be heard in a literal sense. I'd also like to see them be heard in a figurative sense and see action be taken upon what we're saying. I'd just like to say that there's already epidemic student stress at Princeton High School before the coronavirus pandemic. Too many students had to stay up late into the night, even get no sleep at all, just to finish their work. Through the college obsessed culture that we live in, this has been greatly exacerbated by being online school. The outlets that we've had to not be stressed have largely been gone. We can't really hang out with friends. The sports seasons have been largely, they haven't really happened. There's been great effort to have them happen, but it's just hard to do in a pandemic year. And frankly, there's no real reason to increase class times. Students are overstressed and we really will not be able to intake more information during these class times. I know for, at least for me, at the end of the four hours on Zoom, I just want to like go outside, take a break. And I really just do not feel that it is reasonable that we would be expected to intake information. I think these class times would just be more stress and that they wouldn't provide any benefit to our learning as they have been thought to be. And therefore, I don't think there's any benefit to having these class times. It would only increase stress while not giving us any learning benefit. Thanks.
Thank you.
You.
Anlyn Cove is right next.
Hi, I'm Anlyn. I am a senior at Princeton High School and I've got my brother here. He is a sophomore.
What happened?
Something.
Got cut off.
Can't hear you.
Okay. You got cut off.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Anlyn. I'm a senior at Princeton High School. My brother's a sophomore. And one thing that I really have not heard people talking about is that we have a very large workload outside of school. Like we have classes and we have lots of time in classes, but we also have hours and hours and hours of homework afterwards. And I think that this is a really, really big reason why extending the school day in class and on Zoom is a really bad idea. I know every single person I know who is on this Zoom right now is also doing homework. They're trying their very best to multitask and even as a second semester senior, where we're supposed to have less work, we're still doing our very best and trying really hard to get all our work done and it's very difficult for us. The other thing is that mental health, I think, is a really big issue in this situation. I was just having a conversation with my friend. Her mom jokingly asked her if she was depressed and she answered yes. And she gave valid reasons why she was and her mom was really surprised. And I think that this is really important and not talked about a lot. And then the last thing I want to say is I want to give a student's perspective on screen time. Mrs. Wilkinson said a lot of really important things that I agree with. But numbers-wise, like I'm on the screen for fifteen hours a day. I get up, I go to class. I, I'm on the computer doing work, trying to connect with my friends, literally until I go to bed. The only times I'm The only times I'm not on the computer are when I'm eating or when I'm going to the bathroom. Honestly, I think that we have a lot of work. We have a lot of time on the Zoom, and these are the reasons why I think that we shouldn't increase this school time and our time on Zoom. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank very much for saying it. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Maddie Baglio is next.
Matt, you're up.
All right. I'm Matthew Bagley. I'm a sophomore at Princeton High School. Uh, just as a full disclosure, my mom is Betsy Bagley on the board, but this is my own personal statement. Um, uh, so the student body has been super confused as to what's going on. We genuinely don't know wha- what schedule to follow or which proposal to understand for the next uh, couple of months until the end of the school year. Um, well, from what we have seen, though, we're pretty obviously frustrated. We don't know what to think. But we we understand that all students are different in what we need and what they need from the school system. But we're all working hard. Like, sometimes we feel that the administration only focuses on tangible results like grades and test scores. Uh, but we're not slacking off this year or anything of the sort. We're, in fact, we're probably working harder than we would have on a normal basis. Um, if our grades are dropping, it's crucial to take it with the fact that we're teenagers living in a global pandemic. Uh, not directly because of a lack of instructional time or and or participation. We need to see a consistent, we need to see a consistency among a schedule. And we need to see what it would be like for us to prepare. And if you are changing it, we would like to know in advance. Um, it's easier for students and faculty if we have consistency um, instead of just changing it con- constantly. Uh, however, if we cannot find a schedule that suits both the administration and the students, then we must change the hybrid learning environment. Because if anything, it's not pushing me to be in school more or want to be in front of my classmates and my teachers. It's pushing us away. It's not, uh, it's not making us want to be in school more. Uh, the district must adapt to the new system. And as mu- as we love to be in in school in a normal environment, uh, this year is anything but normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
All right, the next person is Fede.
Go ahead, Fede.
I I just think that um that we're trying to shorten the day and make it less because because for all the mental health stuff, having like a long day and feeling like you're on a computer the whole day kind of sucks. And I think that one easy way to kill that is to like kill, to take out lunch, because at lunch in in the school, like, you're not allowed to eat in the school and that, like, I don't know, you have to go. I guess you would go outside and that takes like ten minutes to like set up all your stuff and then plan to go back inside on time. But at home, like, I don't, I don't know about other people, but I eat like during class and after class and during lunch sometimes, but like you you could do that. So I think in, like, the ideal thing for me, I don't know if other students feel like this, would be to cut out lunch and either take out one, like, ten minutes of each period or take out the last period. And that would have school ending at like one fifteen or something. And I think that's much more reasonable. And I think lunch is just like extra time that we have in the middle of the day for no reason. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next is Sam Whitley.
Go ahead, Sam.
Uh, hi. I would like to say that um I do not particularly support the new start times, although I do not have anything against consistency in principle. However, I would like to say that adding another overlay of rotations in the form of the targeted learning periods would not be conducive to cons- consistency and would also add needless complexity to the school environment for students. In addition to this, I understand the need to improve educational outcomes and how the new targeted learning periods could, in theory, help this. However, it has been apparent that this change was that that this was a change in which students have not had any say, and judging by the comments, neither have teachers. This being the case, it cannot be guaranteed that this plan will be able to maximize outcomes for students. In improving this woeful situation, it would behoove the people in charge of formulating these plans to include a broader array of inputs. However, just as importantly, it is necessary that when increasing the amount of time that the school day takes up, a plan must be in place to be published at the same time as the revised schedule to decrease the other forms of work being heaped on students as opposed to just assuming that our students and teachers can handle it. I would like to reiterate that I understand why this new period would be compelling for the school and district. But I feel the need to um say that any increase in class time has to be met with an equal and opposite plan to reduce the strain on students. And that these measures need to receive student consent before being implemented. To do otherwise would be needlessly self-destructive toward both mental health and educational outcomes in a time when you can afford any other external difficulties being placed upon them, especially from the organization that is designed to shape their lives in a positive manner. And that would be all.
Thank you, Samuel.
Henry Camerazol is next.
Go ahead, Henry.
Hi, um, I'm a senior at Princeton High School. I don't really have a prepared statement, uh, because I didn't really want to put in more effort than clearly went into the new high school schedule. Um, but I understand Mr. McDonald's diplomacy when he says there is public interest in this issue, but really, there's public outrage. I really hope you guys consider these changes that no one needs, wants, or has asked for. Um, and please act on the clear message that the teachers, students, and parents are sending you. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Next is William Alena.
Hello?
Go ahead, William.
Hey, William.
Uh, yeah, um, hi, I am, I'm a student organizer. I'm a sophomore. I wrote a petition about um, the required cameras. I got about four hundred and ten signatures. There was a comment section. I'm gonna share with you some of the comments. Um, horrible. I used to be an extremely motivated and participating student, and this has made it so much harder for me to keep my mental health at a safe level. Um, honestly, I have two major sources of anxiety. One is my family and the other one is school. Going to math class and trying to do my work, I just break down crying every time I try to do my work. It's all just so confusing and I'm so completely lost, and it makes me so frustrated. I never did poorly in math or classes before online school, but online school makes me so angry and frustrated. Um, then there's some polling that was accompanying it. Ninety-two point nine percent of students say that the stress has been more than usual. Um, I would like to add that studies show after forty-five minutes of work, productivity decreases. So adding more school time and longer classes is going to increase the workload without much of a bene- benefit to the student's productivity, destroying the purpose of the added time. Pretty much all the fun parts of school, like student interaction, were taken out. And only the bad parts, like endless busy work, remain. It's very easy to become isolated from everyone. And adding less free time will make things so much worse and not improve results, according to various studies. The unemployment rate in Princeton is also double at the beginning of pandemic. And Valley Road should be aware that many students are struggling. And many students have to work extra jobs or do things that otherwise they wouldn't have to do. Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Next is Emily Troy.
Go ahead, Emily.
Hi, um, my name is Emily Troy. I'm a junior at Princeton High School. And first off, I just want to start off by saying, like, a huge shout out to all of our teachers. Like, I'm a junior taking a bunch of AP classes. And I just want to say they work so hard to make sure that I'm understanding everything that's going on, especially in those college level classes. So a huge shout out to them. And also, I think listening to all the parents, faculty, and students um and teachers talking today, I think the one central theme that's going on is that we all want the well-being of the students and the children. And I feel like the first step we need to take is accepting that we have a new normal. We can't expect to go back to before the pandemic, especially since we're in the midst, we're still in the midst of a pandemic. So I urge, like, everyone here, like, all the members of the board to listen to the, to your kids, to your students, and see what they want. Like, in the different levels of elementary, middle, and high school kids, we all need different needs. We're all at different levels of psychological development. And I would tell you, we want to respect an institution such as the Board of Education, but it's really hard to do so, especially when it's been the first time in six months since we've given the chance to be able to like interact with you guys. And we want like more opportunities to do so. And we want to be more involved in the changes that you guys want to make for us, especially since, like, the Board of Education, the teachers, we're all here to prioritize the education of the students in the first place. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
The next is Andre Penn.
Go ahead, Andre.
Uh, hi, my name is Andre. I'm a sophomore at PHS. Sorry. Sorry. Wait, let me just like, do not disturb. Okay. Okay, sorry, I'm Andre. I'm a sophomore. And to me, the new proposed schedule is frankly pretty outrageous. I think it ignores the main problem that students have been experiencing, which is that they haven't been receiving the same quality of education and the same quality of learning that they would have been receiving in an in-person learning system. And I think that one of the main reasons because of this is that teachers have not been able to adapt to be, being able to give us lessons and give us um, learning in a virtual setting. And I've had so many teachers who are incapable of sort of even being able to give us any sort of uh, teachers who are unable to give us any sort of instructional um, time or being able to really engage with us during class. And it's been really mentally draining and really tough for us to learn in this virtual environment. And I think that Ms. Taylor talk touched on like a pretty um, interesting point where she talks about how some teachers were coming together and how they were sort of sharing their techn- sharing their insights on technology and how to be more engaging. And I think that if the school instead tried to focus on expanding things like this and trying to improve the quality of education instead of the quantity of learning time for students, it will greatly increase the amount of ability for learning to occur and decrease the amount of stress for students who are um, decrease the amount of stress for students who are experiencing so much stress and so much trauma from having virtual learning. I think that increasing the class time is not going to lead to any more productivity for students. It's not going to lead to any more learning. And in fact, I see that many of my teachers are not even able to fill up their class time as is. So focusing on trying to improve class time, trying to focus on improving how we're utilizing our current class time would be a far better way to lead to like change than trying to lead to more class time, because it's clearly not working right now. Additionally, I think that we can focus on, um, just one more point, focus on things like expanding office hours, because many times my teachers literally can only give me two or three minutes for office hours when I have a question, because they have so many students coming. And this really diminishes the entire value of office hours. So maybe increasing something like that would be extremely beneficial for the students' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
All right, next is Dean Edelman.
Go ahead, Dean.
Hi, um, I'm actually Eli. I'm using my dad's computer at the moment, and I am a eleventh grader at PHS. I've noticed that when discussing the reasoning behind the schedule changes, many of the board members, the superintendent and administration have been saying that they are doing what is best for the students and what the students need. And while I do believe that the intentions are good, I would also like to point out that it's the students who know what we need best during this pandemic. When I heard about the new PHS schedule, it caused me pretty severe anxiety, caused me confusion, and it caused me to worry about the future of my mental health. As a high school student, I believe that it's incredibly important that high school students are involved in decisions that are made regarding our schedule and our mental health during this COVID nineteen pandemic. These decisions are often made for us without taking our input into consideration at all. As high school students, we are old enough to understand and make mature, informed decisions. PHS students have been vocal about our want to be involved in the making of any decisions made regarding our learning during COVID nineteen when these decisions are being made, not after. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Isabel Sethi.
Go ahead, Isabel.
Hi, um, I'm Izzy. I'm a senior at PHS. Um, first, I'd just like to say thank you for trying to maintain the quality of our education. Um, these are obviously unprecedented times, but um, students are just really tired. Um, the school year has been just mentally, emotionally, and physically taxing for all of us. Kids are worried about their health, that of their families. Some are struggling with financial uncertainty with effects of political turmoil. And the constant changes to the schedule does not help to reestablish a sense of stability in our lives. This is an unprecedented year, so I don't think it's beneficial to try and recreate a normal school year over Zoom, because it's not the same and shouldn't be treated as such. And um, to echo the sentiments of Madame Wilkinson, Zoom fatigue is a really real thing. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends no more than two hours of screen time per day. But we're already spending around five hours every day on our computers for class and then hours afterwards completing homework. And it's really taken a huge toll on, I know, my mental health and that of a lot of other students. You just feel so burned out after each day. It's honestly really terrible. And it takes the joy out of learning and um, increasing the hours of schedule would only exacerbate this problem. Um, as other students have said, I really just hope you consult with students and teachers to make further decisions, because it is us who these changes affect. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel.
Next is Will Murray.
Go ahead, Will.
Hi, uh, my name is Will Murray. I'm a peer group leader at Princeton High School, and I'm here to advocate on behalf of other peer group leaders and our freshmen. But before I begin, I would personally like to express my discontent with members of the panel for clearly not listening to us students and our problems. I have seen at least four of you looking at your phones while prior students have been talking, and I'm truly disgusted by that. Now, over the course of the year, I've noticed a steady decrease in attendance, participation, and overall energy of my group. I think this is largely attributed to Zoom fatigue and the overall stress levels of our school brought on by the last schedule change. After that schedule change in January, we lost our Fridays, which were ones only for peer group and other club activities. That is when I and other leaders started to notice a significant decrease in attendance and engagement. I believe that with this new schedule change, we will continue to lose any sort of involvement from the freshmen and will further struggle with our outreach. Mr. Warren, I know you're a strong advocate for the peer group program as well. And I feel like it's my personal responsibility to stand up for this topic that I care so deeply about. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
All right, next is Audrey Yang.
Audrey, go ahead.
Hello. Um, thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Audrey Yang. My address is seventy-nine Levitt Lane, and I'm a senior at Princeton High School. On behalf of Princeton High School students, I want to highlight a collective concern we have held, namely, the difference between Zoom fatigue and screen time. As Mr. Wood mentioned, greater instructional time would exacerbate inequalities. It would also strain teachers to create new class materials more quickly, as well as push them to cover more materials during the additional instructional time, thereby increasing educators' stress, as well as the homework load on all students. Screen time would in turn increase because homework is also done and submitted online. Furthermore, extracurriculars have transferred to online meetings. Even with Tiger Time, the proposed plans don't seem to account for extracurriculars sufficiently, since many students partake in several extracurriculars, not just one. Mrs. Taylor also mentioned a sense of isolation from her colleagues earlier. Students also face similar issues with their social lives, having been transferred into online platforms. This is important because social lives are integral to our mental wellness, and increasing class time and homework load would take time away from this. We must account not only for Zoom fatigue, but for screen time on the whole, from class time on Zoom to homework time, extracurriculars, and our social lives. Thank you all once again.
Next is Sophie Miller.
Say Sophie Miller?
Yeah.
Sophia. Go ahead, Sophie.
Um, hi, um, first of all, I would just like to thank you all for like taking the time out of your night to listen to all the students, because I know there's a lot of us. Um, my name is Sophie Miller. I'm a sophomore at Princeton High School. And the most important thing I would like to talk about is the workload. Um, for me, like, um, it's pretty clear that all the students have basically said that the Zoom is gonna be too long, which I agree with, but I just want to take a second to talk about the workload, because the amount I get of work I get every day is absolutely absurd. This is echoing annual Anlyn. And I know my teachers are working really hard, but sometimes it seems like, um, like, it's just in, like, people just don't consider how long I spend, like, staring at the screen, doing work after school. And I don't know how to stop this or prevent this, but it's just a real problem. Like, I don't even do anything I like anymore. I can't remember the last time I read a book for pleasure or I wrote in my journal. Like, I just have no time to do anything, and it really, it just sucks. And I know that we have to spend a lot more time on the computer because of the pandemic, obviously, and everything like that, because we have to learn the material. But it's just like my mental health is like absolutely destroyed, and it's just really frustrating, especially when it feels like the students as a whole, when we request things to the district through petitions or other things, like, it just feels like we're not listened to, like, the amount of petitions I've signed that just have not done anything is like ridiculous. And I'm just hoping that, like, tonight, that you guys will see that we do care and we can make decisions and we do have a voice. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, next is Sophia Hilscher.
Go ahead, Sophia.
Great, um, hi, everyone. Just real quick, Sophie, I'm really sorry and I know that a lot of you guys are going through this and I'm just, you know, shout out to everyone. I'm really sorry for what everyone is going through. Um, also a huge shout out to our teachers. I know that this has been repeated, but like, oh my God, you guys are just doing, you know, you're making miracles and we all really appreciate that. Um, so I just wanted to give you a quick student perspective and kind of to mirror what Sophie just said. I mean, you know, it's been socially really hard, but then, you know, on top of that, I'm a senior. Um, Yash is a senior, a lot of us are seniors and, you know, applications are through the roof. We're waiting for colleges. Um, it's just a really stressful time and I know it's stressful for everyone, but, you know, especially for high school students, um, and you know, musicians and stuff like that. I, I know that a lot of this is an inevitable, um, or you know, couldn't have been stopped, but I think that there's so much that could have, or there's so many things that this board could have done to improve our quality of life over the past few months. Um, and I mean, we've talked so much about the instructional time that I think that point is clear, but I do wanna talk about workload. I mean, we are getting insane amounts of work. I've always been pretty busy, but this year has been even worse and there's a lot of classes, like I think the math department has this new um, thing. Everyone's stressed about math classes. There's just specific departmental things even that could be changed to really lower the workload. And then I think the other thing is um, clubs and office hours. Clubs are one of the few things I really enjoy. It's when I actually get to see other students. And I think we really need to make sure that clubs, you know, stay an integral part of our life and that, you know, teachers don't have tons of conflicting meetings that are gonna destroy, you know, that weekly club um, schedule. So I think making sure that there's time for clubs and then also office hours. Um, I go to so many office hours. I think that a lot of students don't feel comfortable asking questions in class and it's really important to have office hours so that, you know, students who are maybe more shy can go and learn the material and we're all learning the material at home, um, for the most part. And of course, you're gonna have questions and I think that diminishing that time is just really, really unfortunate. So, yeah, um, thank you.
Thank you, Sophie.
All right, next is Mart- Martine Masnick.
Go ahead, Martine.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say thank you to the board for your time and thank you for agreeing to extend the time to accommodate those student voices and thank you also to the other teachers and students who spoke. I'm Martine Masnick, I'm a senior at PHS and a resident of Princeton. I think I speak for much of the student body when I say that Zoom causes us students immense fatigue and exhaustion. It makes it extremely difficult for us to stay engaged in class. I hear frequently from my friends and classmates that in addition to the fact that we are in a pandemic, exhausting school days spent on Zoom, in addition to screen time spent doing homework and learning asynchronous material is severely impacting on our mental health. We are seeing spikes in depression, anxiety and worsening of mental health problems in students. Many of you are parents and I'm sure you share the same concerns. Repeated inconsistency with our schedule, in addition, in addition to unclear communication from the board with few, if any, opportunities for student feedback does not help in making it better. We students want to see more outreach from the board and the administration and more active care of students' mental health. We would like to see our mental health concerns addressed in a constructive manner. We commend the efforts of the board to account for everybody's concerns, but another change in the schedule is not the change we wish to see. We implore you to consider the implications of inconsistency and additional Zoom time on the physical and mental health of students of this school district. We implore you to show us the student body of this school district that our voices are in fact being heard and to cease immediately with plans to change the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Next is Adam Kraus.
Go ahead, Adam.
Hi, um, I'm a senior at PHS and I vehemently oppose the new proposed schedule, but I wanna speak more broadly to student representation or lack thereof. Students have been asked our opinions, yet no action has been taken on them. Students were vocally opposed to stopping the Friday reading days and were ignored. Now students are clearly opposed to extending the school day and we're being ignored yet again. At the end of the day, school is for students and you're covering your ears to our voices. You all sit in your ties, some of you on your phones, some of you watching TV, making executive decisions for everyone, but you're clearly disconnected to what's really going on. We are the ones in classes and doing homework on devices all day, every day. We want what's best for us and while you think you know what's in our best interest, you're too disconnected to really know. Students feel this is harming our health, education, and frankly, we feel disrespected. There's a perception that the board's approach to this is to not let the inmates run the prison. I sincerely hope you can prove me wrong, but nothing you've done so far has. Think you know what's better than us at everyone's parent. I thank you so much for listening to us, but until you take action on our words, students have zero trust in the board. Please consider this when you vote on the new proposed schedule.
Thank you, Adam.
The next is Cody, the uh, Cody.
Cody Wiederman.
Hi, my name is Cody and I'm a junior in PHS. I would like to first and foremost thank all of you for listening to mine as well as others concerned. I would like to address the fact that there's always a change every quarter, especially since we, the students, get used, get used to the mod- modified schedules that are made each and every quarter. Additionally, giving more time to students to be in school is unethical due to the stress rooting from the school as is. If teachers are very well concerned, as they may say they are or want to be, they should take the initiative and talk to the students one-on-one and make a connection with the student on a personal level. Instead of forcing kids having to become the adult in this scenario and having to make these big decisions at such a young age. Many kids my age do not know how to start conversations or and or who they do and do not trust given online instructions. This all affects our stress levels and our product uh, productiveness. In the midst of a pandemic, uh, students should not have to worry about multiple schedules in which the administration seems to be confused about as well. Having this additional time will not de- decrease the amount of homework given as our workload is very difficult to even complete. Instead, us students will have less time to do work that takes a lot of time. Since Princeton Public Schools prides themselves in having a great education for their students, you should show it. Listen to what your students have to say and take it more into consideration when making your decisions. All of the things listed above, um, listed previously will negatively affect us as students, um, us as students, as we are not sure who to trust and do not understand the vast issues that I have just listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Michelle, could I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Yash, I don't have any more students are there to, to speak. We wanna hear them all. But here's what I, I'm, I'm listening very intently to the various student speakers specifically. And two things that I've observed. One, I know that they do not want the new schedule. That's very obvious. But number two, and more, and just as important, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to the current stress level and the new schedule hasn't taken place yet, the current stress level and the current mental health issues that students are describing uh, with regard to the current schedule and the current instructional methodologies that are being used. So here's what I'm suggesting. I would like you and Maya as the board representatives to put together a team of ten, fifteen students who would meet with me on Thursday or Friday. And then we will sit down and talk to, with the, involve the school, high school administration along with five or six teacher representatives and talk about current issues of stress and mental health. And let's take a look at the high school plan and let's put it together as a team. And then we'll, and then we'll present whatever those findings are to the fellow student body, the teaching staff and to the Board of Education. But I'm listening to what I'm hearing from students tonight and they're concerned about a new stress level on top of one that seems to be pretty significant at the current time. I don't know if, I, I don't know what your feelings are with that, but I'm thinking that if students really wanna be heard, if you really wanna change practice, if you wanna make the last four months as meaningful as possible, then we need to address two things, current stress levels, current workload and, and a schedule and how that works in the spring. And I'm open to do that with you as the board representatives and people that you choose or who volunteer to be on the panel. And uh, we will work through those issues along with the administration and faculty.
Thank you for that offer. We will definitely take you up on that. Um, as soon as this meeting ends tomorrow morning, we will get started on finding people and we will email you.
So you, you'll be my contact, Yash?
Yes, of course.
Okay, uh, so you'll, you'll email me with a, with a group of students and then I'll put together with uh, Mr. Warren. I'm sorry, I'm hearing, okay. Uh, I'll put together with Mr. Warren, a faculty representative group and the administration there and we'll work on the, we'll work on two issues, current workload and stress, what the new schedule looks like and how do we reduce that?
Dr. Galasso, could we also um, have something similar in place for um, you know, middle school and um, and the elementary school, maybe middle, middle school would involve some students with elementary school for parents because we haven't had.
I, I, I think, I think I need to sit down with the central administrative team uh, over the next day and we need to talk about our plans to how, how to implement the elementary. The elementary issues are different than the middle school issues. Middle school and, and the high school are significantly, the, high school's significantly different than some of the middle school positions. So I think we'll deal with them each as one, as, as individual elements. You know, we'll deal with the, we'll do with the increased instructional time and increase bringing kids in in the elementary school. We'll deal with the middle school and uh, and then, but, but I'm more concerned about what I'm hearing at the high school with regard to the amount of stress that currently is there. And I think, uh, I think, I think the students are articulating in a very sincere manner that they, they are at a tipping point and that concerns me.
Okay, all right.
I just picked up my phone. I think you're going to have a lot more than fifteen people that are interested in this, so I think that's a very good thing. And um,
I don't think it's a bad thing, but I think it has to be a manageable group so that we could kind of.
Of course, um, and uh, Maya and I are going to prioritize a diverse group of people that include every group of students at PHS, um, be they sports kids, academic kids, black, white, brown, everyone. Uh, we are ready for this.
Well, I'll, you're, you're the board representatives and board and student leaders, so I'll leave it to you.
So Dr. Galasso, going back to the elementary, middle school as well, I mean, you know, we're getting emails from parents whose kids are suffering greatly. They're just not able to express themselves the way at high school. So are.
We, we receive emails every single day
Yep.
uh, from parents who are worried about the mental health of their students.
Right.
Elementary parents believe and you heard a, a, you know, a respected physician uh, who was very eloquent in his comments tonight that he believes that the best thing for elementary kids is to be in school five days a week and full-time. So I think there are different issues for different age groups of kids.
Right.
And, and, and some of them, and, and not, you know, a hundred percent of all the issues with conflicting interests are never going to be solved, but I think it can come to a consensus uh, where it benefits each group.
Okay, so there will be some committee or something at each.
It, 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 uh, you know, Dr. Ginsburg will probably, I'll probably ask him to host that elementary piece and then we will have someone uh, host the middle school piece. And uh, I'll work with the high school and the high school faculty and staff. Uh, and I think in a short period of time, we can come to some resolution that's beneficial to all. And students will see that when they uh, appropriately attack the topic and, and, and let their feelings know that this board is responsive and so is the administration. No wants to see, no one wants to see youngsters have conflict or be stressed. None of us want that. So if we can work with, with the program, I think, I think we can come to solutions that are, that'll be very positive.
Thank you. So, so thank you, Dr. Galasso. So if I can ask a question then, in order to try to manage this, we, I know we have a whole agenda of things that we have to take care of tonight. My question um, is how many people are left in line to talk?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
All right, I'm just gonna say this to the students, um, there are a lot of you. Um, I hope what Dr. Glasser just said uh, placated a lot of you. It does give me a lot of hope. So if you feel like that is enough, please put your hand down. Um, it is eleven fifteen, um, and we accomplished a decent amount of what we wanted. So unless you have a uh, really important new point to make, I appreciate it. I think we'd all appreciate it if y'all put your hands down.
Thank you, Yash.
And can I just say also that, you know, we are all parents. We all have kids and we all care deeply about what you guys are saying and we're hearing you. And I think Dr. Rose mentioned on the, on the chat, you know, any of you who are, you know, you're all suffering, but if you are in a particularly bad place, please, please reach out to an adult, someone you trust, and we have the counselors at the school. You've got teachers who care about you. You've got other adults, you know, in your life. If there's, you know, any concern, you know, please, please talk to an adult, please confide in someone because you guys, you guys are really conveying to us, um, you know, where you are, are, and we are very concerned for you all. And, you know, we have our own children, we're concerned about them too, so we hear you.
Okay. Daphne, you're on mute. Thanks. So we're hearing a lot um, in the comments that um, the board hasn't been responsive or we're not paying attention. Our email address is ppsboe@princetonk12.org and you can write us anytime about anything um, and we will be responsive to your emails. So I just wanna put that out there. I think there's um, a, a feeling that the board's not approachable and, and I think we should, we clearly are and we wanna hear from our students and we don't want the perception that, you know, we're just uh, you know, some bureaucrats. So please reach out to us. Right. Okay, all right. So, next speaker.
All right, uh, Ahmed Badacharia.
Go ahead, Ahmed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Ahmed Badacharia. I am fortunate enough to be the student body president at Princeton High School right now. I'm sorry if this speech isn't particularly articulate, um, or cohesive. It's kinda late. I think it like probably goes to show Rebecca's really good point earlier that like this is kind of example of what it would be like normally. So anyway, on that note, I, I wanted to move more in the direction of solutions right now rather than like bashing everyone because there's really no point in that after a certain point, obviously. So, um, the first thing is thank you, Mr. Galasso. The thing about the co- committee is really helpful. One of my points is gonna be let's listen to the survey, listen to the students because that's something that's really been lacking in the past. So if we were able to have a committee, that'd be really beneficial, allow all of us to have a voice in all these decisions, which we have not really had in the past. Um, I think maybe two weeks ago, we had tried to raise some questions about the schedule and we were kind of shut down, being told there were rumors. So I, I'm glad that there is a place for us to go now. Um, the other thing is uh, with regard to the extension of learning, I understand that, yeah, although um, maybe it's unnecessary to extend it due to a number of hours. I know a lot of people think, okay, we should learn more, which is understandable up to a point, but I was thinking about this and I actually made this point a little bit yesterday. Um, that the time this schedule will come into effect will be in April, right? And um, April and like the teachers on this call can probably affirm with me and that a lot of the higher level classes, like AP classes is a time when teachers have almost finished most of the curriculum to give students more time to study, whether it be in class or outside of class. So the chief issue here isn't the amount of like time in schools, the amount of time they have to study. So as Mr. Warren's plan has, I thought the idea of having maybe the office hours, which are like optional, would be really, really beneficial because you get the school hours you need. But at the same time, the students who need to study for the AP or study for things outside of class have the time to do that without necessarily being forced to be in a class they don't need to be because the teachers don't have much more new content to share. Um, and uh, the other thing is, uh, please don't uh, think that kids are slacking. I think a kid made, somebody made that point earlier. Uh, everyone's pretty motivated to do well, even maybe like even more so in younger grades. So that's something that just gets better as you go younger. And um, I think there's plenty of motivation for people in like taking APs and a lot to study. So I don't think it's necessarily an issue of the number of hours they have in school. It's an, I miss, an issue of how much time they have to do work outside of school. And um, so that's going back to Mr. Warren's plan, I hope we are able to focus on that office hours kind of thing, obviously maybe with a few tweaks. And uh, we just hope you continue to have our input like you have today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Miles Ting. If he still has his hand up.
All right, Miles.
Hello.
Hi, Miles.
Hey, my name is Miles Ting and I'm a senior at Princeton High School. I'm extremely disappointed, but not surprised by this new schedule proposal. It seems that the Princeton Public Schools Administration has been on a stint of bad decision making over the past few months. And this new schedule is no exception. At this point, it feels like you're spitting in my face with every new change coming out of Valley Road. First, you cut the school weight room in half for school expansion. Then you take away reading days, mandating the use of webcams, and now you're giving students this train wreck of a schedule that looks like it was made by picking numbers out of a hat while falling down the stairs. How out of touch do you have to be in order to think that these are sound choices? The student body has unanimously opposed this new schedule. If it isn't broken, don't fix it. These changes are solutions looking for a problem. Dr. Barry Galasso, you're the interim superintendent. If you're not going to do anything useful, then please do not do anything at all. Leave the decision making to someone who will listen to the students. I expect you to follow through with your idea of meeting with the students and listening to their concerns. But this schedule is not the only problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, can I just add something here? We, we are extremely respectful of all views we're hearing tonight. And just ask that, you know, everyone on this panel tonight is trying to do the best thing for kids. So I understand there's a lot of anger, but if we could please just keep it respectful. It's, it's, it's important. Thank you.
Ashley Chan is next.
I don't know if she went away or I double clicked on her.
If she went away, then the next one is Honika.
Honika.
She said, Ashley said she's here but can't speak. She just wrote that in the chat. Oh.
Go ahead, Honika. I'll find Ashley. I double clicked on her and something happened.
All right, yeah. Um, so again, thank you all for having us and we understand where you're coming from in that we're all just trying to do what's best for us and that's a common theme and no one wants to make things any worse. But I want to highlight that the lack of communication that there has been this year thus far between the students and the board has been completely insufficient. Um, so that's that. But a major topic of the PHS school-wide meeting last night was mental health and I don't think it's adequately been addressed in this meeting thus far. Um, PHS can, a lot, a main topic that we talked about yesterday was mental health resources that the school offers. They have obviously only, there's only so much that you can offer before it's just, there's only so much that you can offer. Um, and PHS has already offered so much in terms of mental health resources. That being said, you can provide students with all of the mental health resources that you could physically offer in this world. And it would not relieve the amount of stress that the current school schedule, workload and Zoom fatigue and frustrations with online learning systems and the schedule thus far that we currently have. Um, and there, there comes a point where it's literally impossible. Um, and then second, I wanted to highlight that us students, we cannot be expected to perform at the same level, if not even higher level of productivity and quality of work that we have before COVID-19. That standard was already set way too high, frankly. And then in, it is borderline inhumane to attempt to expect us of students as we are going through quite literally a traumatic event in our lives, in our history, in like, in history. Um, it is impossible with the amount of stress placed on us as a result of the poor decisions that have been made by the board thus far this year that we really would like to work with you on furthermore. From now on, we, we just want to have a say. That, that's all we can ask for and I don't, I don't mean that in a rude way. I don't mean that in a way to bash any of you, but we haven't been consulted on anything thus far and all we really need is an input. And so the solutions that help us are the simplest ones. They are the ones that we have input on. And moving forward, that is, that is all I can ask and that is all any student can ever ask and simply put, that's what we need and that's what we need from you moving forward. And that's what I would hope you need of us moving forward because we will always give you honest judgment. We will honest, always give you honest feedback and we will always give you feedback is that is representative of the entire school community. Um.
I don't want to cut you off, but I, you know, a lot of your colleagues and fellow students want to speak, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next is Oleg. Oh, wait, no, Ashley is here. Sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I represent the student body as a member of the student council. And first I would actually like to thank Mr. Warren and the PHS administration in their efforts in listening to us today and yesterday about our concerns and grievances. Thank you so much. Um, the biggest point I want to highlight is the absence of the student body's opinion in past and current scheduling changes. Students and teachers are directly affected by these changes. And I think that there is some extent to which they are entitled to a part in decision making. I appreciate the listening and student input the past two days. But I think the biggest question is why students, administration and parents weren't consulted at the beginning of making these decisions. Because of the big impact this choices of the board have on students, administration and their families, it's only fitting that those affected get a chance to speak before decisions like these are made. Seeing as there is such a huge amount of negative feedback towards a new schedule change, um, I ask that in the future, the board consult students, administration and parents on their input before going forward with any decisions and to reduce the negative feedback that will come towards the board. Um, I appreciate your time and only ask for a greater exhibition of effort responding to student voices. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Oleg.
Go ahead, Oleg.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd just like to thank all the teachers tonight. You are heroes to me because my dad is actually a public school teacher, an elementary school teacher in South Brunswick. And it's, it's just amazing to hear you guys tell your stories that we haven't really heard in class. So I just want to first talk about, I know you've already been talking about the new schedule, but I like to talk about just the whole Board of Education in general and why we feel the way we do. And so I just like to start with, um, like with the virus, both of my brothers moved home. My dad has to work more than one job as a teacher because the wages are so low for teachers and we can, we can all admit that. He was formerly a petty track coach. He was, um, he was not allowed to coach for half the year. And his, our, our income for a family, which is already low because he's a teacher, was cut in 20, by 20%. Both of my brothers were back home, meaning we had to provide more. And the fact is, I feel some of these decisions who are made by people who, in all respect, if your wages were halved, would still make enough money to make ends meet and more. I want you to all understand the fact that there are so many people in Princeton who can barely make enough money and live on affordable housing. And turning their cameras on may seem like a simple task, but for them, they might have family in the background. That might be in their kitchen. And their families might be cooking meals and they might be yelling because that's all they can do right now. Um, yeah, and I, and the add-on in the schedule, of course, it's even more, it's such as time consuming for us to not do what we love. For example, I'm a member of JSA and I love just learning about politics. And the fact is that adding, adding on that extra school time means more time at the computer, less time reading a book or less time going outside and enjoying my life like it was in the past, or at least trying to get back to that. And I know there's all debate about whether we should go back to school or not. But I just want everyone to take that into account. I get the recognition as a privilege as people of Princeton and Cranbury. No matter what we've been through, the thing is, we can never truly understand the devastation of what's going on. Um, and thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you to Yash and Maya for really stepping up and giving our perspectives.
Thank you. Thank you, Oleg.
I know that Ms. Elliott isn't a teacher, but isn't a student, but she's had her hand up for a decent amount of time. So definitely call on.
Gracias.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I'm glad that the cameras are off because my hair is standing up. Um, so, um, I had been a math and computer science teacher at PHS for 23 years. Dear board members, I originally had written a different speech, but I will not read it because you already know what I could have said. Instead, I will remind you what Mr. McDonald said earlier. Let the seniors have a good educational experience. If you ignore their voice, if you ignore Josh and Maya's comments in behalf of the student body, you will be responsible for exposing them to a bad experience created by the people they respect and had high expectations. Obviously, there are many complex aspects to our current condition. But not listening to those who had been, we had been educating for so many years will be sad and extremely disappointing. Thank you very much. I know you try very hard, but remember our priority is our kids, our students. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Next is James.
Go ahead, James.
Um, hi, I'm James. I am a resident of Cranbury. And as a student who has a really hard time focusing in school, the, this whole pandemic and online learning has really um, just brought that to the max and, um, has really messed with me a lot. And I, as somebody who also works after school, until like nine, nine-thirty, I get home at 10 sometimes. If, if you guys added this time, um, I usually use the time that you guys would be adding to, um, to do my schoolwork in the first place. I literally would not have time for any of my schoolwork. I would have to be up like the entire night to finish my work if, if you guys did this. And, um, I know it's obviously the world doesn't revolve around me, but, um, you know, other people, I'm just, I'm just trying to say like, you know, people have things to do. You know, um, I don't know. It's just kind, it's just kind of frustrating. That we even have to do this in the first place. I feel like you guys are always saying, we're trying to do the best for the students, but if you guys were really doing that, we wouldn't have to do this in the first place. Uh, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Next is Brooke.
Go ahead, Brooke.
Okay, thank you, Yash. Um, hello to everyone here tonight. I'm Brooke. I'm a junior at the high school. And while I am grateful for the school district's attempts to improve our schooling online, I don't think this is the way to do it. The issue is not necessarily with the school trying to fit the schedule to our needs. It is actually with a constant change in scheduling that results in a lack of both consistency and transparency. At the high school, I am involved with several clubs, many of which are competitive. With the frequent schedule changes, our club times have gone into complete upheaval. We as club leaders are constantly changing our meeting times to accommodate these seemingly never ending schedule changes. I can't even begin to imagine what our teachers are going through. These kids are already exhausted after a long day of classes staring at a computer. But they have such a huge passion for these club activities they are involved in, that they are willing to sacrifice their already limited time and energy to squeeze them in. Other kids who want to attend them simply can't because their schedules and the lack of transparency from the school district have left them so confused. Our high school's motto is live to learn, learn to live. And our clubs really, truly, I think, do strive to do our best and achieve this. And Princeton seems happy to claim the success of our clubs and our overall academic success as a product of their contribution. But when it comes time to help the students actually involved in these clubs, to find times to meet and improve and do better, it seems that the school is becoming deaf to our concerns. Thank you.
Brooke.
Again, I put this in the chat, but if your point has been made, please put your hand down. And also if you already spoke, put your hand down. It's kind of hard to navigate through that. I, it is 11:30 and the board is still, they're adults and they're humans and they do have jobs. So if your point has been made, please put your hand down. Um, with that, the next person is Amalia.
I don't see an Amalia.
And Darra Blackwell. She's at the end.
There.
Hi, everyone. My name is Darra. I go by she/her pronouns and I'm a junior at PHS. I'm glad that you've taken the time to hear what everyone has said so far. As someone who runs a club known as Care along with other fantastic individuals, like Ms. Danine said, check out our podcast on Spotify and Apple Podcasts. There's a heavy importance in having spaces that individuals can confide in those around them in order to build a sense of empathy for the struggles and difficulties that we all face. We need our teachers, admins and peers to take the initiative to actually, to actively work to create an inclusive and welcoming school environment. I want to advocate for my peers, fellow friends and fellow teachers, and I want the best for all of them. In addition to this, a lot of the students meet with their teachers on their own personal time and on their own terms. And, um, this needs to be acknowledged. We emphasize that there needs for, we emphasize that there needs to be a close-knit connections with teachers. And I feel we should push for those bonds to be created so that they can flourish. Also, speaking on behalf of my friends and peers, we want asynchronous, asynchronous reading days back. Individuals relied on those days as a way to meet with teachers and do homework. Having those days taken away has thrust in us into an ideology in which we are rushing to complete assignments in time and the time constraint instead of putting in effort. In addition to that, we are fighting two pandemics, stupidity slash injustice and COVID. Our mental health is being affected every day, given the fact that we are dealing with countless injustices in the media, but also being thrusted in a learning environment that is new and unfamiliar for us. As a POC woman, I've been affected by this. Um, you're, you are listening, but I want to be heard. So thank you for your time.
Darra, what's your podcast called?
Oh, it's called Care to Listen.
All right, thank you.
Um, Henwell Joe had her hand up before and it went down, so.
You said, uh, Amalia. I see Amalia.
Can I just, can I just add something? So the public comment keeps going up. So I was wondering if we just put an end to the list. Um, and everyone who's been on to this point has had an opportunity. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I've, I've got a really long week. 5:30 AM starts. And, uh, I don't, I really want to hear all this. I just physically, I'm not sure I can do this much longer.
I, I would say to, we read everything you send us. So if you have comments, some of you, I think, have written them out and they're really very good. You know, just send it to us, put them in the email and, and the email is again, the PPS BoE, right?
And Yash is going to be sending that out.
Yeah, I will be. I, I will say this one thing. I agree with you guys about, um, ending public comment. The last person I would just say is, uh, Henwell Joe. She is the person right above Ms. Danine in the chat. She's messaged me a couple of times to speak. Um, if y'all could just call on her and then call it a day for any comment.
And then we just have to see if any of the adults, um, want to speak.
Yeah, I, I really just think at some point, we need to create more opportunities. Um, because we're very clear that at the elementary, middle and high school levels, definitely more work needs to be done. We need to hear more from our parents and more from our students.
We said that. We said.
We agree.
Yeah, and our staff as well.
Let's just listen. Let's just listen.
Okay, hi, my name is Sky Joe and I'm a freshman at Princeton High School. Um, we are disturbed by the constant change of an already inconsistent schedule and the lack of consideration. We have not been able to create a healthy routine as the school continuously ignores us. It's very frustrating as we lack time to fit in extracurriculars on top of trying to help our families. The constant attempt to add more screen time is upsetting and the reasoning behind the 45-minute break did not make any sense as we have been continuously expressing that we are unable to enjoy breaks in the middle school that stretches us out. The break is unneeded. In fact, only more stressful as it does not provide a time for break, but a time for work. We as a student have a right to our own time and how we decide to use it. Forcing an unwanted break in between periods is not giving a break. Instead, giving 45 minutes of school. Many students suffer from back pain, eye pain, shortened attention span and et cetera. Other schools have been in fact, shortening screen time and allowing students to turn off their cameras. Excessive internet use has caused skipping meals, limited physical activity and an inability to cope with feelings. This may be disappointing to hear, but many students have admitted to taking a nap when teachers give out time for working class or during gym time as that is the only time they can get rest. Teen should not have to spend their, teen should not have to spend their already non-existing time trying to look decent on Zoom cameras when they have been skipping meals and showers for multiple days. I appreciate Princeton High School on the diverse studies, but school no longer feels like learning rather. I appreciate Princeton High School and the diverse studies, but school no longer feels like learning rather memorizing. Students deserve a personal life, a steady amount of sleep, and most importantly, time to enjoy our last bit of childhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, in the couple of group chats that I exist in right now, I have asked people that, I have essentially told people, the students that we are done, we got what we, well, we, the reason why we brought so many students, that means has been accomplished. So on behalf of the student body, Maya and I are saying that the students, our comments are done. If there are adults still left that wish to speak, that's their prerogative, but the students are done for today. And I just want to thank you all so much for your flexibility. I know this must have not been fun for all of you and I apologize for that. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Dr. Glasser, for offering to meet with us and we're really appreciative for that. And I know there were some comments or in some statements made that were excessively over the top and I apologize for those. Students are passionate and I apologize to all board members, Dr. Glasso, for any sort of comment that may have seemed offensive. That was not the goal. We just want to be heard and we were heard today and we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Yash. And thank you all of the students. We really do appreciate it. We are, we hear you.
And thank you, Yash and Maya for your leadership and for really being staunch advocates for the kids because we really do want to hear from them. So we look forward to partnering with you more in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so.
Matt, do we have any more people lined up to speak?
Sure.
Adults, we really would appreciate if you'd write to us at some point. We have a full business meeting to still do and it's eleven forty at night.
And I do want to remind you all that legally we have to be finished by midnight since we didn't notice a meeting.
That's correct. I think.
Oh, wow. Do we?
Talk that fast. I really think we need to cut it, cut it off and write to us.
I think I would have to agree with that and, and apologize to people who have been waiting for a long time, but our legal duty is to conduct the business of the board. And I don't want to jeopardize that by trying to do business when we haven't noticed a meeting.
We have to approve the finances and a number of contracts and a number of HR actions and things that if we don't do today, we can't do it again for a week because we have to notice it when we meet. So I do think it's important that we get through the full agenda.
Okay, that's your call.
All right. So I think, Matt, Dr. Gloss, are you good to move on?
We're fine.
Okay, so we are in item I, one of the agenda, harassment, intimidation, bullying. I believe that's a consent item. Committee highlights, I think, would the board be willing to simply share those in writing to, would that be possible? Yeah.
Can we just use the, the summaries?
Yep. Well, so, yeah, summarize for each other. And then we have K one policies as an action. No, it's a consent item. I'm going to just read through the titles of the items and stop me if there's any concerns that we're talking about doing this all in a consent, right? So we have retirements. And there, you know, we should say that we're grateful to these employees and appreciate the time and the service with the district. We have appointments. We have sidebar agreement with Pressa. Transfer reassignments. Substitute student replacements. Personnel items. District officers, athletic appointments, curriculum and instruction, student services, leaves of absence, resignation. And that takes us to M one, grant application acceptance. M two, curriculum approval. N one, professional consulting. And two, professional consulting with Hunterden. And three, a settlement agreement. Then O one, financial reports. O two, emergent purchases above bid threshold. O three, fire evacuation drills. O four, registration travel data. Five, project submission for NJ DOE review and approval. And that takes us to the consent vote. Can I have a motion? Peter, second gene, any discussion? All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call, so it's a consent roll call. Mr. Bolden? Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Betsy Bagley.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes, sorry.
Afton Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Kanter.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Consent, consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Passing unanimously, that takes us to Q one. We've got another public comment. Again, we normally take fifteen minutes. I don't know if we're going to, have we exhausted public comment or are we going to?
Beth, I don't know if you saw in the comment, but some people are expressing that. You know, given the time constraint, I do think parents and students at other schools were ignored due to the part, already teaching of high school students. We're just making it clear that we just let them go first because they're kids and we're willing to stay here and listen to, you know, whoever would like to speak with us. However, we will be setting up additional meetings for the, for the elementary and middle schools as well. Is that correct? Dr. Glosso?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Should we consider noticing a meeting for next week so that if people want to make sure they're heard by the full board, that they have that opportunity?
Well, there's a, there's a middle school meeting tomorrow night, I believe.
Correct.
How many people can go come, because is that limited to five of us?
Well, we're not making any decisions, so.
But if, so Betty, Dan and I are the reps, so we're the only ones on camera.
Go as a walk.
Does that work?
Watch or no?
I don't know that we can.
I think the focus of tomorrow night is planning for the next school year. Is that right, Dr. Glosso?
According to the original intent, it was.
Right.
It was the twenty one, twenty two school year. But I'm sure there will be some, I, I think in the, in the agenda that was sent to me, there's about ten minutes of us articulating what the middle school is. And then, but it's not really billed to be a town hall regarding the middle school proposal. That, tomorrow night is mainly for twenty one, twenty two. That's the crux of it. That's the way it was advertised.
And I'm not so sure how fair that is for people who may want to come to a meeting to, to, to state their views when it's been noticed and the purpose is for, for something else.
Yeah. We, we can always consider tomorrow, Dr. Gloss, you can look at your schedule and tell us, but maybe we can think about scheduling something for next week or, you know, we have.
I think it has to be next week because you're going to take some time to consider the comments from tonight and then work with the school administrations and the students as we had indicated.
Yeah, I would like to have, give you a chance to meet specifically in high school, obviously.
Yeah, so it's going to have to be a week because tomorrow is Wednesday. Time, you know, it'll have to be, it'll have to be a week.
Yeah, well, i- this month, we didn't have a meeting noticed every week, so, you know, we can, you can maybe suggest some days for us and we can try to do that.
Let me take a look, let me take a look at a, let me meet with the administrative staff and try to figure out exactly what we believe would be an appropriate time to do that.
Thank you. So do we want to have this, we have a second public comment?
Four people.
There are four, four more people. Let's do it.
Xiao, Xiao Bing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I apologize that I was multitasking on my cell phone when you called me two hours.
I remember.
Yes, so that's a real example of Zoom fatigue.
Yes.
Is that I lost my turn and stayed another two hours just to wait to speak. If you could imagine that, what it's like for the students staying four hours a day in front of the laptop and daydreaming and missing the instruction. And now the plan to extend one more hour to the school time is in the current hybrid mode. As everybody already expressed, first, it's adding screen time for everybody, even for the in-person student because everybody's on their school laptop. Second, the safety concern to have snacks or at lunch with mask off. What about the rainy days? Where are they going to eat? Third, the current proposal to have eighty minutes for Palm students. I think that gave too much credit to the students' attention span. We adults stay here for four hours. How many of you are working on your cellphone, on your laptop, reading a book? All right, so thinking about this. And lastly, the mental issue expressed by the PHS students, it's the same for the Palm student and elementary students. However, they don't know how to speak up for themselves. With that, I think the ultimate goal is to ensure that our students learn and grow in a healthy and safe, safe, safe environment. The interim and the shelter plan should serve the purpose of realizing it, but not countering it. Instead of extend, extending the current school time with under current hybrid mode, I think the district should direct their resource and energy to advocate vaccination for the teachers and staff, provide more support to the teachers and students, and draft a solid reopen plan for the school district to operate normally in the fall. From what some elementary school parents expressed, I think this district should focus on reopen by grade level, but not at a full street, district level. I want to quote some lines from the district website. We believe our mission is to prepare of all of our students to lead lives of joy and the purpose as knowledgeable, creative and compassionate citizens of our global society. And one of the approach is, we believe wellness, balance and the positive emotions are integral to our students' optimal performance, both within and beyond the classroom. For that, I'd like to invite you to attend a day of learning with a student from PHS or Palms, both in person and the remote, and to feel their ups and downs they have been going through for almost a year.
Thank you so much for your comments. We are, we appreciate it, but as you know, it's, it's late and we want to make sure the other three people get to speak, but thank you so much for sharing your thoughts.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Angelica?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I know this has been a very late night. Thank you so, to the teachers and Mr. Warren. I just want to say the way all of you look and how tired all of you are is exactly the way our children look and are. You keep on changing or wanting to change the schedule and it's very, very unfair to them. Our kids are so stressed out already. And these meetings really should be about working on getting the students back to school in safer ways because they cannot be home all the time. The current situation with these kids is Zoom, work, get depressed and sleep. It's really heartbreaking. It's very, very unfair. And this cannot continue. It, it's too much. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Sue.
Hi, this is Sue Evans. I'm in, in Princeton. I have a, a student at the middle school. I'd just like to say that I think the way the middle school plan has been laid out is a little bit unfair. You're expecting the kids to be in school till one and then give them just an hour to get home, eat lunch and get back on their computers. Some of these kids live, you know, a twenty, thirty minute walk away. Or even if they're riding home in a car, they're, they're not getting home with enough time to effectively have a snack or something like that. I also think you're being extremely unfair to the teachers. The teachers are under so much stress and have so much that they're expected to do and now we're adding to that workload. The teachers will not have time, you know, to, to travel home. They're still going to be at the school. And I just think it really needs to be thought out a little bit better. I think, you know, if you don't come out and say immediately, first thing tomorrow morning, that you're going to rethink these plans, your call tomorrow night, whether it's what you want or not, is going to end up being the exact, a, a repeat of what happened tonight. With just people expressing their displeasure, their discomfort, their unhappiness with the way the plan has been laid out and the way it affects. I know I've been texting with some other middle school parents that are really frustrated that the emphasis tonight has been on the high school. The high school is important, but they're not the only ones. You've got so many more students that were left out tonight and their voices were not heard and their parents' voices were not heard because the parents gave up listening to the high school students say the same thing over again. So that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
That's it.
All right. So is there any final comments to the board?
Just to reiterate, we had discussed earlier that there are going to be committees at the elementary school and the middle school as well as the high school so that at the elementary, middle schools, there'll be more discussion about the plans before they're finalized. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, so Sue, I don't know if you're still on and I don't know if you missed that part of the conversation, but yes, middle school and elementary parents did not get as much of a chance to speak, but we, we know there are issues at every level and, and we want to work, we want to work on everything for all kids.
Peter?
I just wanted to make a, a comment. I'll just take ten seconds or so. And this is a more general comment about the role of the student representatives on our board. And I just think that it's something, obviously, we're not going to do it at eleven fifty four PM tonight, but it's something I think we as a board should consider after, particularly after today's discussion about what the role is of the students on our board and how we utilize them to be most effective for them and for us.
Thank you. And I will point out Debbie, Debbie actually made a really good suggestion this week about thinking about whether we should have a middle school wrap on the board as well, so we can kind of take that into consideration. Because I think it is really important to really hear their voice and have them, have them represent to us for the students.
Yeah, I would, I would just note, and when Daphne and I spoke with Yash and Maya, you know, we're a committee that does a lot of its work. We're a board that does a lot of its work in committees. And I think we also want to think through how much visibility or engagement. You know, our, our student liaisons have with a fuller board experience. Because they, there's a lot that would happen in student achievement or equity that they wouldn't be aware of. So I, I think, I think that Peter's point about thinking about the role, how to make it as effective as possible while also respecting their time is something that, that we could give some more thought to. And I would also say, it's amazing how fortunate we've been to have such remarkable student liaisons for so many years.
Yep.
But I would second having maybe figuring out a role for a middle school liaison, listening to kids this weekend on the Palms renaming library panel. There were some truly amazing students on that panel who I think could give us the same kind of perspective as, as the high school liaisons.
Thank you, Susan. All right. Any, any further comments? Are we ready to do a motion?
I'll just, I'll just note that, you know, this is a tough year. This is a year unlike any other. But there are lots of great examples like challenge, success, the bell schedule, where there, there was active student engagement where there, we, we did seek student opinions. We listened. And the takeaway was we need to do more of this. We need to hear the students' voices. And so I, I, I hope, we don't have to have this conversation too often in the future. They, those voices are, are smart voices and they're ones that we should hear.
And we know, you know, everyone's doing their best and we, again, I just want to appreciate, give some appreciation to our administrators who are still on this call. You guys are up late. It's a big day tomorrow and you are working so hard to make all this work for everyone. And so, you know, gratitude to you guys and.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. Really appreciate your patience and perseverance and, and the hard work you do. Thank you, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And Mr. McDonald, I just want to echo what you said about challenge, success and the, the need for, it takes time to plan a, you know, a good, good schedule and, you know, the past couple of years, a lot of work has been put into that and that's, that needs to be remembered.
Right, so if there's going to be another pandemic, we want at least three months, uh, three months.
Success though is data. It's, it's, you know, a little different than what kind of happened yesterday and tonight.
No, but I think the methodology that the administration used to put that together is the perfect example where you had teachers, students, the administrators working together to change.
From your, your same challenge, success.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is the data, but it was data, like, yeah, we saw and talked a lot about the data. They did, they did, the students, the administration, the teachers for like a year. Right, no, I know. And then we as board members realized certain things we had, you know, we needed to do based on the data.
Jean?
A lot, it's eleven fifty-eight. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Nobody wants to make it till midnight. We're done it. We're pumpkins.
Who knows what we'll turn into?
I think meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Good night.
Everybody.
Thanks to, thanks to everyone.